America and to the Republic which stands one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Councilmember numbers?
Here.
Councilmember Lee. Councilmember Whitmer.
Here.
Vice Mayor Lewis?
Here.
Mayor Doolittle?
Here.
Are there any public comments? No, before public comments we have a presentation from P G N E. Bill.
Good evening, I'm Bill Chang, the local government, local government and relations representative for P G N E assigned to Atherton. Mr. Mayor, council members and Mr. Roderick, thank you, thank you for this opportunity for, for us to update you and to inform you as to some upcoming work that we have going on in the, in the town of Atherton. That's related to upcoming work that's in San Mateo County and actually throughout our service territory. So, I'm gonna give you some background as to the work and then I'm gonna introduce my colleague Darren, Darren Klein and Sarah Wetter who are with me here for, for moral support and technical support. So, a little bit of background. This work really goes back to right after the tragedy that we know happened in, in San Bruno. So after, after San Bruno, we started looking at our, our pipelines in very different ways. We went to other utilities in California, other utilities in other states. We even went to other industries in the country that also run, run pipeline systems and we started to formulate a plan and implement some best practices. Some of those best practices started a few years ago with the foot, excuse me, ground and aerial patrols of our transmission lines. Then a couple of years ago, we started hydro testing or strength testing our pipelines. Hydro testing as the name implies, we fill a section of pipe with water and then we overpressure it to, to test the, the strength of the pipe itself. And then last year, we started the inline inspection process or sometimes called pigging. Where, where we insert a robotic tool into the transmission pipe and we examine the pipe from the inside. Best way to describe it is to conduct an MRI of the pipeline from the inside. And so, the next chapter of this multi-year plan is to take that, is, we're taking the, the data that we gathered from the ground patrol and the aerial patrol of, of our pipelines. And we overlaid the, our easements on it and we started looking at, for lack of a better word, the, the encroachments onto, onto the, onto the easements of the, of the pipe. And, and this is only transmission level pipelines. Encroachments such as structures and trees. And, and the main reason for doing that is really the safe operation and the access of the pipeline, not just for P G N E crews, but if, if something should happen and your fire department or, or first responders need to access that pipe. We don't wanna lose time having to clear vegetation in order to, in order to access that pipe under, under emergency conditions. The secondary or, not secondary, but the secondary aspect of it is, as you can see in the diagram, trees have roots and, and roots like our pipes. And, so we started looking at the types of trees, their proximity to the pipe. And where certain trees in certain places pose a, pose an imminent risk to, not the steel pipe itself, but the, but the protection, the coating that, that we put on the pipe to, to avoid the corrosion of it. So that's the background of, of, of our plan. So with that, I'm going to bring up my, my colleague Darren, who will give you some of the details as to some of the work that we're planning to do in, in Atherton. But before, before Darren speaks, are there, are there any questions before Darren comes up and gives you the details?
Is Darren gonna continue with what you're talking about?
Yes. So, one, one contextual information, you've heard me talk about that this plan, this, this work is focused on transmission level pipelines. So, when I say transmission level, most people immediately think of the, the large bore thirty inch, three hundred and thirty pound transmission pipe. That is a transmission pipe, but in CPUC parlance and a, a transmission level pipe is not defined by the size of pipe but by the pressure inside it. So anything sixty pounds or over is considered transmission level. And so, based on that, the smallest diameter transmission level pipe we have is four inches. And, four inches and transmission level pipes are all steel. So with that, my colleague Darren.
Can I, can I just ask?
Of course.
How many transmission pipes do we have in Atherton? I think how many linear feet, miles?
I can get you the linear feet and miles for you, but, but.
It will be in this presentation?
Darren, well, we don't, we don't have the, the feet and the linear feet in the, in the presentation, but I can get that to you. And, but Darren can, will have details as to where, where we're talking about.
Just for point of clarity, any areas that you're working in, can you tell us the size of the lines that are in the areas that you're working in? Other than the lines you work on, the, the general area you're working on, are there four inch lines, six inch lines, thirty six inch lines?
No, they're, they're four to eight inch lines, they're transmission lines that come into Atherton and then feed into distribution lines to service.
Our, our large bore lines, line one oh nine, one thirty two, I'm not sure whether or not those touch Atherton, but I can check for you.
Yeah, so, distribution lines are what goes from the transmission lines into the homes, is that correct?
The, so the transmission lines are the, are the, the high pressure lines and then from there, the distribution lines go, the distribution lines service, excuse me, the distribution lines connect to service lines and the service lines are the half inch to one inch lines that go to the home.
And distribution connects the, the transmission to?
To service.
To service line?
Right.
When you said sixty pounds, that's sixty pounds?
PSI, PSI, right.
Yeah, per square inch.
I'm sure that there are some other questions or comments to the background information that you brought up, but it, I mean, and I suspect you probably get into some detail about where you guys are gonna.
Yeah, what, what we're doing and how we're gonna go about the work and, and all of the specific details as we talk about it, like depth of cover of the pipe. In Atherton, it's roughly forty to eighty inches. There are certain venues that we can give you more specific information, but due to security reasons, we can't just publicly say it. So we're more than happy to give you all of that information. We may not be able to answer every single question this evening, okay? You know, one of the, when we first met with your Public Works Director, we, you know, we had shown him where the pipe is. And unfortunately, under our security, we cannot share that information with him. And, you know, it's, it does, it does at times, it gets difficult to share the, the information that you need to know. But we have kind of used this process to figure out how to get you that information and your first responders have copies of the pipe and you guys can call them up whenever you need to and talk about that. And there are also some public resources, I'm more than happy to send you the public resources that will tell you exactly where your pipe is. There's one on our website as well as one on the, the federal government. National Transportation Safety Board also has that, that information to look at on a regular basis. We can also produce some maps for you and that kinda stuff, but I'll get, let's get through the presentation.
You, you actually have produced the maps.
Yeah.
Because there was some replacement where one of those two pipes, I don't know if it was one oh nine or one thirty two, and we were given a map that showed the locations of both those pipes.
Great. So, and, and we can continue to share that in that map form.
And it was a fair, it was not a large portion of Atherton where those pipes extended?
No, no, there's not a, it's not a large portion, we're not talking miles and miles of pipe or anything like that. It is a transportation, I believe it's less than a mile, the transmission line and it, and I can get you all of those specifics.
Right.
So, as, as Bill was saying, I, I am, I work for the Community Pipeline Safety Initiative. This is what we're doing all over the territory. When I say I'm all over the territory, I was in Amador County this morning, I was in Belmont yesterday, I've been in San Luis Obispo and, and we're doing this because, and we're having folks like me run around because we wanna make sure that there is a consistency to how we are dealing with this issue. Trees are a very emotional issue. And we have been doing this program for a little while and I, I want to tell you as I get into this information, you guys aren't the guinea pigs, okay? This is, we have been through some communities, we have had our ups and downs with this, but we have figured out ways that we can keep the pipe safe so that first responders can do what they need to do in, in moments of emergency, but also keep the nature of our neighborhoods. This is a, this is a program that is focused on, we wanna tell everybody there is a transmission pipeline. You know, the, in the past, we have, we, when we had the events as Bill talked about, we see that there are ways that we can improve what we're doing and we want to be able to say that we have the safest pipeline in the country. That's what the goal is and we know that we are very close to, to that goal. So, when we look at, at, when, in our initiative, we do have some issues with tree roots and we wanna make sure people understand that. We wanna make sure that we have our pipeline markers up. We have people in the past have taken down our pipeline markers and, you know, we need to get those pipeline markers back up. That is, it's incumbent on us to do and that's what we're doing. But, you know, I've talked about first responders and Bill also mentioned tree roots and I do wanna take just one minute to let you know what, what we're working with when it comes to tree roots. When a tree is directly over a pipe, you can see here where the tree roots can wrap themselves around a pipe. You get a good windstorm, it jerks the pipe, we now have an incident. The other thing is, is, and remember Bill said, these are steel pipes, right? But that doesn't look smooth bore, that is cathodic protection, that's what the cathodic protection looks like and that keeps corrosion from happening on the pipe. We check that cathodic protection every other month. And what the issue comes on with those tree roots is those tree roots can grow into that cathodic protection, embed themselves and negate the cathodic protection and then we have corrosion issues on the pipe. What's very important in this day and age is when we're putting gas through a transmission line, you know, pressure gas, it gets cold and you get the same problem you get when you got a cold glass of tea, condensation on the side. And the tree roots are trying to get to that condensation. In times of drought, it's even a greater concern. So that's, so between first responders and tree roots and making sure that people understand that there is a maintained way where, where gas pipes are, I do wanna take just one moment and say, okay, what are we looking for? What we are looking for when it comes to our guide to safe landscaping is we're looking for lawns and flowers that are on five feet on either side of the pipe. This gives access in case of emergency and also we don't have an issue with tree roots and those kinds of things. As we move further out, we would like bushes, medium shrubs and then have some larger trees. It's, it's what we call right tree, right place. There are certain species that do well in what we have as the outer zone and then having larger trees fourteen feet away from the pipe. That's for two reasons, one, trees falling over the pipe, but also trees falling away and having tree root issues that I have discussed. So, in Atherton, everything is considered private property, there are no franchise trees or right of way trees. We have put together a plan where as we look at our pipeline and look at trees that are a risk to the pipeline, we have a plan in place where we go and talk to homeowners. It is a conversation where we run them through the safety issues, just like we did this evening, and we talk about what is going on with their property and what a transmission line, what a transmission line is. There are some people that don't read their closing documents and they get a little surprised that there's a transmission pipeline there. But we also, you know, we see this as an educational opportunity. When we meet with them, we have them sign an action plan. This is not something that a lot of utilities do, but we sign an action plan which is a contract. It is an agreement with them that this is how we at our expense will restore their property and figure out a replacement tree. Now, when we do this, we also work with the homeowner so that tree permits are honored and that we do everything that the tree permits that you have here in Atherton and we follow those. And we have committed to working with your city arborist, with some of these trees, with all of these trees because of the tree permit. And if we have homeowners that decide that they don't want trees near this and, and we come into issues of replacement trees for them, that we would work with the city to have replacement trees planted around the city so you don't lose that canopy cover. Now, we know that there are some people that, that may decide to do everything they can to keep a tree and we will take that safety assessment and figure that out. But I want you to know, as I said earlier, we have the, we could be changing the nature of a neighborhood overnight with these types of tree removals and replacements. That is not our goal. So we have instituted a tree by tree review. Where we are willing to go through every tree on folks' properties and figure out, are there trees that we can manage close to the pipeline? And hopefully keep those trees. There are some trees that, like you saw in the photo, are directly over the pipe and, and unfortunately, we're going to have to replace those and hopefully we can replace them in the, in the right tree, right place. But we have this review and that's why we have been starting to talk to our customers about what those options could be and what those opportunities are. So the tree by tree review, just so you know, there's a risk assessment that we assign to a tree, there's thirteen categories where we look at the tree, the circumference of the tree, how far is it from the pipe, how deep is the pipe, what is the age of the pipe? And we are committed as a company to then put that in a manageable category and we manage that and we come back and visit the tree year after year. This is not where we're saying it's manageable and not come back, we, we come back once a year and it is part of our regular inventory as we manage the safety with a pipe. And we feel this is the best way that we can work together with the city, work together with this, the private homeowners so that, you know, we can keep that streetscape that you guys have here in Atherton. The other thing I do wanna mention is we understand that not just private property customers get affected, even when they lose trees, there's people that drive down the street. We have been talking to HOAs and, and other things, that's why Bill had mentioned Sarah Wetter is here as well, who is our customer impact person, and here, we are willing to do whatever it takes to communicate what's going on in the neighborhood. And we will do any kind of open houses, we'll even go door to door if that's needed. And we are also taking a different, a little bit different approach and, and I don't know if you've received these yet, but you will be soon. These are our gas safety newsletters. And we've been sending these all out to San Mateo County and you're gonna see another couple iterations of these. And we wanna make sure that people understand, you know, there is a gas transmission pipeline in their neighborhood, there are safety issues. There's a way that we can all work together. And so, we have been going above and beyond any kind of federally mandated requirements when it comes to talking to people about a transmission line. You know, the federal, the federal mandates are, we have to send them a letter once a year. How many people open up a letter from P G N E once a year, right? We are sending these that people look at, you know. We meet with our first responders, we're federally mandated to meet with first responders once a year, we meet with them twice a year. I know we met with you more than twice this past year. Because we see that safety is about a partnership, working with first responders, working with city councils, working with even people in their yards and managing the risks that we have every day. That is our commitment as a company and if you have any questions, I'm here to answer them.
Go ahead, I'll go down to the presentation.
Yes.
Any questions? Anybody else have questions?
My question, to the homeowner standpoint, sir, what's the typical, your first thing to hear in order and sort of walk me through?
Yeah, so.
I throw that thing away, I mean, so, but you get a lot of mail and probably talk to us.
Oh, yeah, no, and that's, and we, we send, we send it a few times too. But we do send an initial letter that, that talks about what is going on with their property and that we would like to come visit them. You're right, I mean, we, not many people respond to that, so we, we call them. And we do get a response when we call and we go, and we go to their house at a time that's convenient for them. You know, if it's seven thirty at night or on a Saturday, we go and we sit down and we walk them through a presentation just like this. It's a little different than what I'd be doing tonight, only in that there are certain easements, so we actually go through some of their documents and explain, you know, what the situation is on their property. We have a discussion with them about, you know, we explain to them that we are here to, you know, work with you on the pipeline. We give them the options of managing trees and, and we explain all of that. And we then come to an agreement with them as to what they would like to see happen. In a lot of cases, people, you know, I, I have to tell you, a lot of people are very responsive to us and we have about a ninety percent success rate when we go and talk to private property customers all over our territory. And they, they see that need. Now, there are people that come back to us and say, is there any way you can manage some of these trees? And that's when we put them through the private property assessment. It is, like I said, it's got all the different equations that go into that and then we have it on our inventory so we know to watch that tree. We also, just so you know, when it comes to the manageable, we have a VEG standard with the CPUC. And that I M process, and I've thrown a lot of letters at you, sorry. That private property assessment is with that VEG standard. So the only way that we would see these manageable trees, you know, having to be removed is if the CPUC asked us to look at the pipe differently, like if they changed their mind. I, I don't, we don't see that happening, so that's, that's what that review is. And we, and, and like I said, we have about a ninety percent success rate. For people than the, the, the other ten percent, I know you're probably curious about that. What happens there is we come to an agreement with the homeowners around them and then we start to do our work. They see that we are very responsible. And when I say responsible, we not only remove the tree, remove the wood, in some cases if they wanted it's firewood, we cut it into firewood. We stump grind, we're doing all of this so that we can have the best customer interaction as possible. And we have other folks that, as they talk to their neighbors, they do come back to us and say, look, yes, we, we wanna have some work done. And we usually, you know, we get five to eight percent that way and.
How many homeowners are you talking about now?
We have eighty homeowners.
Eight, eight zero?
Eight zero. Yes, sir.
I have a question, so I just wanna clarify, we're talking about transmission lines, we're not talking about distribution or service lines.
Correct.
And my understanding is that there are transmission lines in Atherton, there's two of them, I believe. One on the, in the southeastern portion of the town and the other in the far western portion of the town.
Yes, sir.
Second, in, on your slide seven, it showed an image of a tree and a pipeline under it. And it, I mean, if you look at that, it looked like a pipe, maybe you can go back to seven plus.
Well, I was told I don't, I can't reverse. I mean, I think.
There you go, so here, no, that was it, one more forward, there you go.
Yeah.
So in this image, the pipe that is immediately under the tree is very close to the surface there.
It appears to be.
It appears to be.
So, let me just finish. What, what you said in, or what Bill said in the introduction is that your pipe, that your transmission pipes are forty to eighty inches below the ground. Certainly, there are lots of different kinds of heritage trees in Atherton because it depends on the circumference of the tree at Fort Pita. I would say, in my opinion, the most important heritage trees that we have in Atherton are the, are the oaks, they really define our town. And my understanding from an arborist is that oak roots generally don't go below two feet. They're very surface and I know for my property that the roots are right on the surface. They, they, now, they probably get some help because there's one within reach and they love to get all the water they can.
Yeah.
But they're, it's a surface rooted tree. And those are, so we need understanding.
So, so that's the advantage of.
Let me just say one more thing.
I'm sorry, I thought you were finished.
The image that you showed of the pipeline with the roots around it, while those roots may not be invading the pipeline, certainly, anyone can understand that, you know, if that tree were to fall over in a windstorm, it could damage the pipe and the last thing anybody wants is that. I mean, we want to make sure that these limited transmission pipes in Atherton are very safe and we want to make sure that our first responders also will be safe in the event that there's any issue. So we wanna, we, we don't want to risk a situation where there would be a problem, we wanna be able to give you support, but we also wanna make sure that the, that the science is right and what impacts our community in terms of these large, particularly oak trees, that we know that.
Yeah, and that's our, that's what the integrity management process or private property assessment that I refer to is. When we have an oak like you're talking about, right? If that's within five feet of the pipe, it will impede first responder access to that pipe in the case of an emergency. That is, that is, you know, unfortunately, that's what we're talking about right now. Is that if, if a, if an oak tree is directly over the pipe, it's accessed for first responders.
So, eighty homeowners, approximately how many trees have you identified? And in a situation like this one, this looks like a larger pipe than the four to eight inch, I heard that you said most of our pipes are.
Yes, ma'am.
Right now, is there any potential of instead of destroying the tree or destroying the neighborhood by cutting down all the trees, of relocating the pipes that would be, that are impacted?
I, I, the, when it comes to pipe relocation, the permitting involved and things like that, it takes us about three years to relocate a pipe. That, with the immediate issues of safety, that something could happen at any moment, we're looking to hopefully do this work in the next couple of months so that we can keep the pipe safe.
So, these pipes have been like this for how many years?
These pipes have been this way for a long time.
For a long time?
Yeah.
Right, at any moment, you're at risk of anything catastrophic happening, that's for sure. And have you identified these pipes as being imminent danger? You said that you.
No, ma'am, the, your, the pipes that are here are safe. We are, we are working right now to keep the pipe safe and having access for first responders is the number one issue that we have as, as we go through this process. And being able to safely maintain that pipe and that's all about first responder access.
Okay, my question about possibly relocating the pipes, you say it's just a, a time issue, right, for permitting?
Uh, well, I mean, the engineering, the engineering and expediting, it, it has taken roughly three years.
Seems like a short term, short, short amount of time to say a two hundred year old oak.
So, you know, first off, I guess the picture that you had that showed all those roots going around it, looked like that was like sandy soil and it was not a tree that's indigenous to this area, but I'm not a tree expert, but. So, on these eighty homeowners and the locations there within the trees that are associated with it.
Did you answer my question, how many trees? I'm sorry, but, you know, would you ask him that question then? How many trees?
How many trees on the eighty sites?
We don't know exactly, that's why we, we need to get onto the private properties and look at the trees. Some of the trees are in backyards, front yards and so as we get into the properties, we'll know exactly how many trees we're gonna be reviewing and looking at.
So just, just to follow up, so these transmission pipes go through some backyards?
Sometimes, yes.
They're not just along the street?
No.
Just, I mean, I think, didn't you also say that you already reviewed the area?
We reviewed the area that, we reviewed the trees that we thought were franchise trees in, in the public right of way. But then we were told that in Atherton, the property lines go to the middle of the street and so that, that made everything private. And so, we reviewed the trees that we thought were public and then we still have to review the trees that are on private property. That, that we need to get onto the property owner's land and, and look at the trees. So we don't know exactly how many trees we're looking at.
Yeah, because, you know, originally there was, I guess there was a precursor to this presentation and it kinda had some estimates on trees, but maybe I was wrong, but. You said that, you know, you, you would do like an MRI and things like that, so you haven't done any of that?
The MRI was an inline inspection.
That was the, that was the inline inspection.
Yeah, so you're gonna stick something down the pipe and.
That's, that's, that's the pig. The pig fits, the fig, the, excuse me, the pig doesn't fit an eight inch pipe, the, the pig fits a thirty inch pipe.
Okay, so you can't go in and actually inspect it to see whether or not the plastic is being eroded or is, is attracting roots and things like that? You really can't find out whether or not it's impacting it, is that what you're saying now?
We can, the cathodic protection, there's actually a low grade current that runs through the cathodic protection. And by monitoring. And by monitoring the current, we can determine whether or not something has impacted the coating.
So have you done that?
We do that, uh...
We do that every, we do that every other month as we test it, but yeah, we, we have it ongoing and I can tell you that we do not have corrosion.
So is, is there, is there no adverse impact to the cathodic protection on the eighty homeowners' pipes?
Right, right. Everything is, everything is operating safely right now.
So, yeah, so, um, as there've been, uh, you know, this, this tree falling down, pulling up the roots because the roots were further than the normal eighteen, twenty-four inches, we got forty inches down. Has this caused problems in other jurisdictions? I mean, have we had, have you, have you or any of your sister companies had this fault occur? Or is this just your supposition, I guess?
No, we, we've been doing, uh, we have been doing root studies. There, we've been actually teamed up with UC Fresno and working on root studies and showing that, uh, where it could and have an impact on the pipe and, and compromise the pipe. We do have trees that have been over lines, like the, the picture you saw is within our territory. And that has shown that we have these issues with tree roots. The cathodic protection that we have is, is a great defense. And one of the concerns that we also have with tree roots growing into that cathodic protection is when it does negate it, if it does start corrosion, then we will have to come in and replace the pipe. When we come in and replace the pipe, we have to remove the trees on ten foot of either side to do the construction. So we're hoping that by doing it this way and having manageable trees, we can have the least amount of impact on your neighborhood.
Just, just a couple more questions, I guess, from me. You said, uh, if we remove something, then we, we work within your permit, which will be you replacing either three, for every heritage tree, it's either another three, or if you go with a larger sized box, then it's, you have two trees. Of the right trees, what are the right trees?
I have those lists for you and I can email them to them. We've been, uh, we have a lot of them that are drought tolerant and, and those kinds of things. But it's a, it's a long list I would, I would have to send to you.
You would send this to everyone?
Yeah, sure.
The tree committee.
Just to make sure I did...
You have the list?
Yeah.
Right, we left a copy with her, so... Right. We've been working with your arborist and city staff already and, and looking at...
And so you said if, if a tree were to fall over and perhaps it pulls up the, the pipeline and you have some sort of an issue, you know, the first responders need to get in there. Isn't there specific places where they shut things off? Wasn't that part of the problem that we had, I guess, in another jurisdiction? Whether it wasn't shut off or whatever, but, but, so the, so where the tree is and where the rupture occurs isn't where the first responders would get the pipeline shut off, it's somewhere else, is it not?
The, the, the first place we would go is where the rupture is to make sure that we could keep the area safe until all of those things started to get shut off.
If the tree fell over, it would be ruptured and it would be, you know, broken.
It, it would be broken, it could be spewing gas. We would, we would, of course, secure the area. We would start to shut down with automated valves or even unautomated, we would send people out. We have a gas, uh, we have built a twenty-four seven gas operation center in San Ramon, if you guys would ever like to come visit. And we monitor that pipe on a regular basis and we monitor pressure, you know, and everything that goes on there. And we, when, I don't know if you heard about the Fresno dig-in, because our biggest issue is dig-ins. Ninety percent of our problems are dig-ins. In Fresno, there was a dig-in and due to...
And I think Mr. Mayor might have a question on what a dig-in is.
Oh, I'm sorry. It's when somebody fails to call eight-one-one before they do any kind of work. And, you know, we come out and mark the pipe for free. So somebody did not do that in Fresno and they dug into our pipe and, uh, the gas blew out and, and it was...
It was a thirty, it was a thirty inch, three hundred pound transmission line that they hit with a front loader.
Yeah. Um, we knew six minutes before they called us because of the changes in pressures of the pipe. And we started reacting. In the last three to four years, we have put in roughly two hundred and twenty automated valves and we're putting in another hundred and eighty as quickly as we can. Um, and that will be done in the next two years. So yes, we are getting more automated valves and we are doing that. But when the incident itself happens, it's usually somebody digging in right at that point. So first responders immediately go to that point, first off to check, see if anybody's injured. What creates the big issue for us is if they show up and there's a tree right next to it and they can't get to that pipe, they have to call out a tree crew and it basically makes it a lot more unsafe for folks when dealing with that emergency. And we're trying to make sure that when first responders react to that, in that immediacy, that we can keep the area safe.
So, so, um, I, I guess there was, there was, uh, you know, the program, I guess, in, in East Bay at one time. And I, I guess she made some presentations there to a number of jurisdictions. And then you were taking down a lot of trees and then I guess they kinda asked some questions and then suddenly you're not taking down as many trees and you're doing the replacement, but...
Yes.
Could you give us a little bit of insight as to how you went from the large number to a smaller number and still felt that there was safety? So, and kind of explain that. What reassessment did you do and what, and what did you scale back? And how did you scale back? Could you just kinda talk us through that real quick?
What we found when, when we had first started looking at vegetation over our lines, our, we, we had, our first immediate was, our first immediate response was safety and we had discovered that there were structures that people lived in that were directly over the pipe. We had swimming pools over the pipe. We call them P ones, priority ones. That was the first thing that we went. And as we were seeing the, all of, as we were working with those and we saw the vegetation over the lines, we said, okay, we gotta make sure that everything is safe. And we went in and we started, when we went into East Bay and we said, we need to make the line safe, we need ten foot either side. And, and asked to go in and start doing our work. And that was not the best approach. It was not the best approach because we were changing the nature of a neighborhood overnight. And we said, you know, we've looked at this pipe differently, you know, we did that four years ago. We need to look at this differently again and see how we can work with the communities to get the best result. Where we can say that we are being safe and we're also keeping the nature of our neighborhoods. And so we came up with the integrity management process when, when we started those discussions there. And that's when we found the thirteen key points that we could manage. We could figure out some trees that, like you said, have shallower roots. So an oak tree that's six feet away from a pipe, we have access, we don't have to worry about the roots because they're shallow, like you said. So we started seeing that, you know, that we needed to take the time to work with everyone. And that's why we're here to work with you. We've, we've talked with your arborist and, and we've met with your city staff and we wanna keep continuing to do that so that as we work with the homeowners, that everybody knows what's going on. We try to, we keep as much of the tree canopy as we can. And, and really, you know, we learn, the only way you can do that is by working together.
Eric?
Uh, I got, I'm sorry, but I'm a little exhausted from all the great work you're doing. Because I really don't feel you're doing great work. And I'm thinking here, I mean, I, I, I'm, I didn't even have a whole lot to prepare for this and I don't think any of my fellow colleagues have a whole lot to prepare for this, but it sounds like you've been around for a couple of months, dealing with staff, but you didn't take the opportunity to kind of prep us. But I'm sure that's in the interest of Homeland Security, correct? So let's talk about, you mentioned that, um, you guys make sure that each property owner gets notification at the time they record the deed, that you guys have an easement and they're responsible for X above the easement, correct? And the language is probably pretty clear, but we don't know that because we haven't seen any of that language. But I'm guessing it's probably pretty clear that what they can do and what they can't do above, correct? And how long have you guys had this easement on these properties? Let's just guess, I'm gonna take a guess, fifty plus years? And what have you done on that easement in the fifty plus years you've been responsible for? Uh, I'll take a guess, nothing. Okay. So let's just go with nothing. I am very familiar with easements and I understand that the fire departments in, in here, and there are also fire access easements historically where fire departments, and they actually go out and inspect to make sure that these easements are clear here. We now have foliage that's been growing for fifty years, okay? And now you guys come in here, and I'm guessing you've been doing your jobs for fifty years because you've been part of this program, you've been doing a lot of outreach to the public. Well, I don't think that the public here has gotten any outreach, really. And you're, you're talking about eighty, I, I noticed that you said eighty properties. How many of those eighty properties have actually had contact with you? And, uh, let me see, I'm, I'm gonna guess, two weeks since you notified them. And how many property owners were home when you notified them? In the interest of Homeland Security, don't tell me that those property owners have...
I'm not sure I understand the question.
How many property owners have had contact with you since you've done this outrageous outreach in the last, and I'm gonna look at this letter here, that says you've been doing outreach the week of June twenty-second? Oh, that's not too long, right? Who made the decision, who, what was the decision, I mean, the decision to do this in Atherton during June, July? Maybe even August, you might quit twelve August to do something too, to do outreach to the public. Whose decision was that, you?
I still don't understand the question.
Who made the decision to work in Atherton on a line you haven't touched in fifty plus years to decide to do that in June, July, August? Was that your decision or was it somebody else's decision that we're gonna go ahead and plan to do it during the summer months? Which I'm assuming that a lot of people are gone. Easier to work with people when they're gone, isn't it?
Well, it, councilman, if, if they're gone, then we will continue to try to contact them until we've reached them.
So you won't do any work on anybody's property when they're not available to do work?
Correct.
So you can see some frustration here. You guys wanna work on an undisclosed location because of the interest? I, I think that if you've been dealing with this for fifty plus years, we wouldn't have a Homeland Security issue because everything would be cut, correct? Or gotten away. Unfortunately, I think another council member here also asked you how many trees. And I got a report that there are over five hundred trees. And based on your little description, the area that you wanna go north to south of the line is twenty-eight feet, you wanna denude foliage?
No, that's not true.
It's twenty-eight feet, I measured it.
What, what?
What is it?
Our intention is not to, our, no, of course not. Our intention is not to denude foliage. We're not here to clear cut anyone.
Over five hundred trees isn't denuding?
We're not here to clear cut five hundred trees either.
Your report says five hundred trees.
That's an approximate number.
Oh, but you don't know, because you haven't been on those sites.
Correct, correct. And those, and those five hundred trees are based on foot patrols and aerial patrols of our transmission lines. And so after we get into those private properties, we will probably be able to save sixty to seventy percent of those trees.
So in the notification you did to those properties, of course, that have the easement, have you notified the neighbors?
We, how many, how, why did we go? Sarah?
So, yeah. Hi, my name's Sarah Wider, I'm with the Customer Impact Team for Community Pipeline Safety Initiative. Um, so as far as reaching out to these customers, we have not yet mailed letters to each of these customers to start this conversation. Once those letters are mailed, we will have a representative who works one-on-one with them. If they're not home, we take the time to find them and make that contact. Part of what my team does is a wider spread of outreach to the community and the neighbors who are also impacted by the work. So not just the individuals who actually have trees being removed on their property, but their neighbors, the folks up the street, the folks down the street, so they can understand what this program is, uh, why it's important, the safety purpose behind it. Uh, as far as specific, uh, where the letters go specifically, it'll be, you know, again, that surrounding neighborhood. I couldn't give you the exact approximation of where that'll be. Typically, we're looking, you know, five hundred feet surrounding that. Uh, we'll likely be doing more than that in this area.
Uh, again, it's just, it's, it's disappointing because it, it just, I mean, you seem to be on a schedule that we're not aware of how that schedule's gonna go. We've been, this council here and this town has worked really hard to try to be transparent, notify our residents. And now we have you, the utility company, coming in here saying, hey, we're gonna do it our way. We're in control of the thing. The town actually has the ability to disperse information out as well. And I understand you've talked to staff and we're dealing with trees, but you really don't know what you're dealing with, do you?
We do and we don't. Um, as soon as we get onto the private properties, we'll know more.
Okay. So then let's just go to your, your, you've, you've obviously got a considerable amount of work. And these are gonna be, historically, you guys have had contract people to do this work, this work, correct? Not your people, it's not P G N people, right? It's contract people?
I think you're referring to our electric overhead transmission management.
So below grounds in-house, above grounds out-house?
Well, I didn't say that. I'm saying that this is a separate effort. This is a, this is different than the electric management, which some...
So you're, the, simply, it's a simple yes or no question. Are the people that are gonna be the contract or arborists that are gonna be working on these sites to denude five hundred plus trees? Because you really don't know that yet.
We're not taking on five hundred trees.
Are they gonna be contract people? Are they gonna be P G N employees?
Both.
And you're gonna have background checks on these people because they're gonna be on private residence property? Because we've determined that a lot of this work's gonna be on private residence property. And most of that, by the way, is estate property, so you're gonna have to go through gates. Are backgrounds gonna be done on these people working on private properties?
All of our contract crews go through background checks, just like every P G N employee.
And I think Councilman Whitner mentioned that there is a risk factor. Do we have an emergency plan with the fire department so that the town can be informed what the fire department knows on an emergency plan? Just in case something happens on the lines that you don't have any damage, but may get damaged during your work? Is there an emergency plan that we should be aware of? There's no emergency plan?
I, I, again, I don't understand your question.
If something happens, Councilman Whitner asked, if something happens out there, you apparently say that none of the trees have damaged any of these lines, that we don't know the location, that are clearly not what you displayed. If a root or something or a blade touches your gas line and there is a problem, does the fire department have an action plan or are they gonna be notified where you are daily? And is the town gonna be notified daily where you are to make sure that we're all aware of where, if something happens, that we're prepared?
Yes.
Yes.
And there's no underground work here?
It's, it's not underground work, but you said the reason why you're denuding all these trees is because you potentially could have roots that will penetrate, let me use your words. Outside, they haven't gotten into the line because we determined that would be a, a failure of the line, we'd have another issue. But they'll attack the outside of your line, right?
The, the coating on it.
Right. So, and I'm assuming that in the five hundred trees you're not touching, there will be no mature trees that are gonna fall from thirty, forty, fifty, hundred feet near on an area of land that will potentially be near this, of course, you say it's a four to eight inch line. There will be no damage to that line. You're assuring all of us that you're not gonna have any damage. The fire department really doesn't need to know, right? Because you don't need an emergency plan because no accidents are gonna happen.
Again, I, I'm not hearing the question, councilman.
The question is, when you drop trees, they impact ground, impact ground impacts gas line area. You're dealing with mature trees potentially that damage a line. It's called an eruption of a line. Is the fire department going to be working in-stay daily with you while you're out in an area that we don't know where the line is to determine if an accident occurs that we, the town, they, the fire department, are gonna be aware of what you're doing so we can have an action plan in case of an emergency?
Yes.
It's not hard, am I... And I'm not even, I'm just in questions. Wait till you get me in the comments.
Can I just have a follow-up?
Please.
Because you could talk about, uh, you stump gardening and things like that. So how do you protect the pipe when you're doing stump gardening on for the tree that is saddling?
We start by calling eight-one-one to dig. They come out and they mark the pipe. And we do what's called potholing so that we can deal with that issue. We can determine exactly where the pipe is and we do all handwork to remove the tree. We, we don't bring in a big machine and start dropping things. We do handwork around the pipe and we make sure that the pipe is marked as we're doing...
Kind of expose the roots first?
We try not to...
Take the tree down first?
Yes, we take the tree down.
And, and to, to, to clarify a little bit, when we take the tree down, it's, it's not like what you see on TV where...
The felling?
The felling, no, no, no. We, we take it down piece by piece. Right. And, and, I mean, in a, in a neighborhood like this, of course, we wouldn't be felling trees.
That would be a little death thing. No, I think the...
Yeah, that's a good question. Uh, I just wanted to clarify a couple of things. So I, I understand that in your initial report, you identified five hundred trees and what you just said was that you were, um, certainly you could save sixty to seventy percent of those trees. and what you just said was that you were, um, certainly you could save sixty to seventy percent of those trees.
Based on private property experience in other jurisdictions, that's roughly the statistics, sixty to seventy percent.
So, I just wanna work through it, because there's obviously a great deal of concern...
Sure.
About what's gonna happen, that, that, we're, we're talking about eighty homeowners along two stretches of Atherton, and if, if you were to go in and take out thirty to forty percent of those trees, we're talking about a hundred and eighty to two hundred and forty trees over eighty homeowners, that's three trees per homeowner. Uh, I don't know, and I take it, you don't exactly know what the size of these trees are, but that's a great deal of concern if they're big trees. Uh, and I just wanna note that you said that oaks are okay within six feet of the pipe, so that gives me frankly a fair amount of comfort. I definitely want you and, 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 you know, a flavor of what Councilmember Weis was asking about is making sure that the homeowners that are along those transmission lines are aware that they're along transmission lines, that is a really big deal.
That is the...
Those transmission lines have been there for a long time.
That is the first thing we say.
So we wanna, we want to encourage you to contact those homeowners, and I take comfort in the fact that you said that you won't work on any private property without actually contacting the homeowners and having that interaction with the homeowners.
And signing an action plan, and signing an action plan, I, I just, I'd like to just bring that up one more time, that is a contract, that is an action plan. I understand that other lines of business have come through people's properties and just done work, that is not what we're talking about here.
We won't, we won't even go on the private property without the permission.
There is a agreement. We won't.
Right.
And then we go through your permitting process, so everybody's aware.
You can just follow up on the permitting process and some of the timelines and stuff, and by the way, I think we're all very sensitive to the, the safety issues, so...
Of course. Yeah. Oh, yeah, yeah.
But obviously, um, the, um, you mentioned that you wanna get this work done not in three years, but in a couple of months, is what I heard, um, and that...
We'd like to start, I, I'm sorry, if I could be specific.
Go ahead. It was your words, yes, please.
Yes, when I say it takes a couple of months for us to contact the homeowners, and start to talk...
No, I'm sorry, that wasn't what I was saying, I, when, you said it was took three, approximately three years would take to go through a pipeline relocation process, and that was too long to be hoping to get this done in a couple of, I wrote down, done in a couple of months.
Then I misspoke, sir, I'm sorry, I was trying to say that it would take us a couple of months to get through the action plans, the actual work here would probably take a couple of months once we had the action plan signed, the whole process from soup to nuts is not a two-month process.
So it's a...
It's, I think it would probably take us about six months, yeah.
Six months. About six months, right, and, and, uh, I didn't represent, I'm not sure I understand, but, well, explain to me what you'll be complying with in terms of Atherton policies and, and rules relating to...
All, all of it.
All of it, yeah.
We'll follow your ordinance through the letter.
Except that the town can't tell you how to take down a tree.
I'm not sure what you mean.
I mean, that if I wanna take down the heritage oak in my house, and I go apply, the town says no.
Right.
If you go and say, we need to take that oak down for safety purposes, what happens if the town says, no, it's beautiful?
Then why should we relocate the pipe?
Then that becomes a separate discussion. Because, since you asked...
So since you comply with all, and I, I'm not sure, but, but, you don't really comply with everything, you comply with as much as you can...
I understand. Since, since you asked.
Consistent with your safety obligations, I assume.
Becau- s- since you asked, because we are a C P U C regulated utility, we are exempt from, what's it, um...
Discretionary.
Discretionary permits, which includes tree permits, and that's not just in Atherton, that's everywhere.
Right.
And so, we usually don't seek tree permits when we do tree work. That being said, for this purpose here, we are happy to follow the permit language without getting the permit, if that makes any sense.
No, that doesn't make sense.
Replacement, we're talking replacement.
Uh, yeah, right, right.
I actually would like to have that explained, that it, it's important, we, you know, we spend a lot of time, the trees are a big deal.
Yeah.
Yeah, and, and we got rules that have been built up over a very long period of time, and I'd like to understand, I, I get the spirit of what you're saying, which I think says, we are, we wanna comply with those rules as much as we can, but I don't understand exactly what that means.
Uh, I'll, I'll just go with the example, if, if Atherton's rule says, if you take down a tree, you replace it with ten, we come in with ten. If Atherton says, if you take down a heritage tree, you come in with twenty, we'll come in with twenty. Depend, whatever your rules say...
The rules that you can't take down heritage tree, that's the problem.
Well...
Go ahead, please.
I guess the rules say if it's a heritage tree outside the main building area, you need to go to planning commission for review. And if there's a certain number of trees, we also need to conduct an environmental review under the California Environmental Quality Act.
Right, and we do an environmental review.
So that's our process here, and then the replacement tree, we do have some guidelines in our code, but they're typically then recommended by the arborist and approved by the planning commission for replacement. And that's heritage size, right?
For, and, and, we, we're gonna be following those guidelines, those...
Yes, sir.
Yeah.
So go to the planning commission, is that what you said, go to the planning commission?
We'll go to the planning commission.
Yeah, it's, well, that's...
Wait, wait a second, wait a second, you'll go to the planning commission, understanding that the only thing that they can require you to do is a discretionary permit? Are you going to follow the discretion that's been put out to you by the planning commission, or are you gonna say, P U C, here's our little umbrella, you can't touch us, we'll go do what we need to do? That's the question.
No, we, that, part of this program, and, and I'm gonna, we are here to follow your process. And when I talked about restoration, we meant we pay for all restoration, and I'm sure that's what, when you're referring to your planning department, they're gonna say, we want things to be looking a certain way, or...
No, they might say, no, you cannot cut that tree down. That's discretionary decision from the planning commission, if they make that decision, how will you respond?
Okay.
Have they come across that?
We haven't come across that yet, so I'm not sure...
I'm just asking...
No, I know, I mean...
Hypothetically for you, because I have, that decision has been made in this town before, when somebody asks if I can cut down my heritage tree, the answer's come back, no, you cannot.
Then let me, oh, hang on, let, let's, let's do this, if in our private property review, we come across heritage trees that are right over the pipe that we feel that need to be replaced, we'll come back to council and we'll have a conversation.
Bill, if, if, I think what I prefer is, is actually something written right hand, and I really appreciate, you know, I trust you guys or anything else, but you know, actually get it right,
Yeah.
that lays out exactly how, how you will, what rules you will follow, what rules you won't follow, there's limits on, you know, our, our regs and, and rules, what they are, so that in advance, we know what, what constraints we're facing.
Sure.
That'd be very helpful.
Yes, sir.
If you would do that, I think that will, uh, satisfy the council, uh, in terms of moving forward here, and I'm saying that
Mr. Brondricks...
the council will agree with everything that you propose, but, uh, but I think that would go a long ways to help if, if you would like, put in, put in writing
Sure, yes.
what your intention is in terms of the steps you will do, how you will work with the planning commission, uh, to the extent that you want, if you want, uh, and, uh, that information will be helpful to us, and we're not asking you to put into that letter exactly where the pipelines are, we understand the safety issue there. But, I, I, I think that as much clarity as we can get on this issue, so that we can properly communicate to our residents and give them as much comfort as we can, because we're gonna do everything that we can within the bounds of safety to protect our trees, that would be very helpful.
I would expect nothing less.
And, and, just from the legal side, I don't need a letter from your council saying what you can do, I'm very well aware of what you can do. Um, I think what the council is asking you is what you're willing to do, forget the legal constraints, this is a, you're gonna find a lot of heritage trees, and you take down two hundred heritage trees, you have just taken down more than have been taken down by homeowners in the last forty years, I'm going to guess.
I understand.
And so that's going to be a big deal, and I, I think what the council is asking you for is what you're willing to commit to ahead of time.
Sure.
And if there's any questions on the ordinance, please meet with us before you prepare that letter.
Yeah.
So, I have a, I have a couple of, of comments and questions, um, first of all, I don't think this is a two to four, or even a six month process. I think you're looking at a very long process to do this, and your comments to me about the potential of relocating these fifty-year-old, uh, underground pipes that could potentially be under our, uh, homeowners' heritage trees that have grown up over the last fifty years, uh, would take a two-year or three-year process. I would really like to see that explored in greater detail, uh, instead of coming in and saying, you know, here's this, uh, redwood tree that has grown up over the last twenty to thirty years, and they're very tall, uh, and, uh, we're just gonna chop it down. And it's, I just don't wanna see that, and I think that, um, to the extent that if you can identify where these pipelines are, how many are in the, uh, franchise right-of-way, or are they, and how many are actually in backyards that are gonna not only disrupt the landscaping of these homeowners' backyards, I mean, I don't know if you've been into many of our homeowners' backyards, uh, they're specimens, I, I, I was in a backyard at a luncheon the other day, and they have more, um, specimen, uh, um, trees, um, the, um, I'm, I'm losing the, the name a bit, but, anyway, yeah, you know which one I'm talking about, and it's just beautiful, not the name of the resident, but the trees, the Japanese naples that are years and years and years old, and they're specimen, and you're gonna go in and you're gonna rip stuff up and do a what, how many, uh, what's the easement that you're, that you're saying you're...
Twenty-eight feet.
Twenty-eight feet?
No, 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 no.
It's ten feet on each side.
That is, that is what we are looking for, the easements are based on what are part of the, the title, I don't, the easements vary.
Yeah. So... So anyway, I, I just...
I think if they agree to give us a letter and work with the plant with Lisa to help put that together, that seems like a good step, and we can review that at our next meeting.
I, I, I guess I don't understand the, this coding, uh, trigger, that if, if the pipe is in danger, you are notified, and if we haven't had any notification of these pipelines, uh, being in danger, what is this, I know safety's a huge issue, we want safety, we don't want pipelines exploding in our backyard, okay, uh, we want you to have the ability to turn off gas immediately, shut off the flow as quickly as possible. But the, every other, uh, analysis of the, the part of, uh, coating, uh, that's a good tip, maybe we need to increase that to every month, so that we know if in fact a leak is, uh, damaging that coating and the potential of getting rust inside. So, it, it, to me, I, I see the need for safety, I just don't see the need to rush to take down five hundred trees.
Again, we're not taking down five hundred trees.
Could you, as you're doing, developing this letter and responding to us, obviously, you're gonna be looking a little closer to get a better number?
Yes.
Is it possible that when you send this letter in, you give us a refined number as well?
We probably won't have that number for some time, because eighty property owners, summertime, um, as we, as we communicate with them and get on their properties, we'll have that number, but I think the council would like that letter sooner than later.
And, and, if, if you could also include a copy of the U C Fresno's root studies that you've engaged with, that would be helpful.
And, and... Yeah.
I'm sure our tree committee would like to look at that.
Sure, sure.
So I'd like to mention, since, uh, you did mention that you are the guys gonna be controlling, I, recently, the town's had an experience with P G N's arborist teams, and so I don't know that if you guys actually have total control, because you're guys, you're really good at committing and saying they're gonna be the best and blah, blah, blah. But in the town's experience recently, we have had experience with P G N's arborist crews on their tree trimming, and I know you're gonna say, different department, not us, we're better, we're actually the elite gas group, right? Okay, I, I already know the answer.
Absolutely.
That's not what I'm, I, 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 I clearly, the town's had experience, and I actually have some photographs of some recent butchering of trees, which I'm sure this is not the methodology you guys will utilize when you advise your not-contract or contract people, we haven't made that decision yet, on when they're doing the work in these easement areas, I'm concerned that the town arborist is not gonna have enough bandwidth with to watch you guys not butcher over five hundred trees that you're, we are now not talking about in the twenty-eight foot of non-easement area. I mean, this is a little example of your recent, and by the way, we complained, they came back out and said, well, and these are your contract people, because you don't have control over your contract people like you would think, they go on private property, they cut trees, they tip, they cut tips of trees, and they leave. And my concern is that you're not gonna have enough control, and we're not gonna have enough bandwidth to watch you. And it's disappointing to me, you know, when we sit here and we talk about arborists on people's private property, and you talk the talk, you're real good at it, but I'm real concerned that you're not gonna be able to deliver, and we are gonna be the recipient of hundreds of phone calls, and some people will probably call us daily to tell you how good or how bad your work is. And how, I have somebody walking through my gates that says he's P G, but he's got Joe's Tree Company on the side of his car. I mean, you see our concerns?
Absolutely.
And it's gonna be amplified, because obviously burglars and everything else will figure out that you're here doing tree work, and they'll start going around knocking on doors saying, hey, I'm here to cut your trees, and I'm gonna go in and steal your jewelry, we don't want those phone calls, and the police chief doesn't want those calls either.
What we've done in other jurisdictions, um, given those concerns, I think, uh, what comes to mind is, uh, I think Burlingame and Hillsborough have expressed the same concerns, and in those cases, we have actually gone to our contractors, gotten photos of their crews, shared them with the police department, and notified the police department exactly which guys will be where, on which day, at what hour.
At a minimum, that, at a minimum, the police department should have a list of every person that's gonna be on that street, every name, a photograph, and so that when that telephone call comes in, they can go, oh, Chuck Berry, yeah, he's with P G N's Professional Tree Trimming Group, oh, we're gonna...
And, and, to, this is not gonna happen, because we're, if and when we do this work here in Atherton, we're not trimming.
So what's the penalties for you guys doing this, and how much, and are you gonna cover our town arborist's staff time when she's out every time we turn her around, because you guys committed to do a certain level and aren't?
Yes.
Her salary is...
If, if you feel you need a second or third arborist, we'll pay for it.
So, that is, I, I wanna move the conversation, and, and we've got a longer agenda, and I was committed to keeping this meeting to two hours, and...
Wish we would've had you the only one on the agenda.
Uh, uh, I think that if you would please put a letter together that will define, uh, exactly the procedures that you're gonna take, uh, I, I don't want you to delay contacting those homeowners who live along the transmission lines, they can be aware of that.
Mm-hmm.
And, uh, we wanna encourage that, but there's a lot of concern that's been expressed along a number of different lines here. Uh, I look forward to getting your letter so that we can review it, uh, and, uh, hopefully, we'll be able to discuss that at our next meeting. And you're gonna be out of the pink-tailed emergency plan today.
Yes, sir.
Thanks.
Good. So, Bill, I know that, since you do all P G N though, an issue is the electrical lines, the above-ground electrical lines, and the trimming job that they do,
Mm-hmm.
plus the cleanup, plus the trees that they trim, some of them that they trim shouldn't be trimmed during the summer, so please spend some extra time, maybe, uh, another time if they actually
Yes.
hear our concerns, so that you could maybe carry them back and get this...
I will carry that, um, the, the overhead electric work can be much better, I'll say that right now, it can be, it can be much better. You're, you're not the first to, uh, to express your concerns.
Definitely not the model, and, and, we haven't aired our opinions on that issue, let's just be clear.
George.
So, uh, Mr. Mary and, and council, so you've, you've noted that they're gonna come back with that letter with additional detail on off-plan and those sorts of things for the town, but you've also said they need to go ahead and begin that outreach to those property owners.
To let the property owners who live along the transmission lines know that they live along the transmission lines.
Right, so you, what you, what you, what you wanna make clear is, unless there's an absolute, in, in their determination of those trees between now and that letter, unless there's an absolute determination there's an emergency, we don't want them cutting out the trees.
Right, exactly.
Oh, yeah.
And that, I, I think they're gonna come to the planning commission if they need to...
Right.
Well, if there's an emergency, you have to deal with the emergency, and...
Oh, yeah, yeah. Right, we're...
But you would have some warning if there's an emergency, right?
Of course, we're, we're not here to, to say we're gonna start work next month.
Right.
No, no, this is, this is the first, this is the first conversation in many conversations about this, this work, and, and many of those conversations will take place with your residents, and on, on, you know, on their time and at our cost, and...
So would a staff, a town staff be present during those conversations? So would a staff, a town staff be present during those conversations?
We've talked about this on. I, I think that we should review that when we see the letter.
Okay, okay.
They said that they would pay for us to have a second arborist if we need an arborist because there's a time and, and, you know, we've, we've got one arborist for the whole council.
No, but I understand, I understand that some of our residents are elderly and I just don't want them to, uh, not understand.
Mm-hmm.
Not, you know, and I think, uh,
And there's gonna be a lot of.
A representative, um, the town should accompany and be a president of those meetings. I really do.
Be nice.
The mayor. I nominate the mayor to go.
Oh, mayor.
I, I.
We agree. Everyone agrees. Need the mayor.
I think we'll talk about this on our one-on-one instead of the meeting. And I want, I want, thank you very much.
Thank you, thank you.
We look forward to your letters. The next item on the agenda is public comments, I think.
And, um, all of you know how to find me, so please call me anytime. I don't care if it's the weekend, if it's eleven o'clock at night, if you have a question about this or anything else, call me.
Can you just wait for public comments? I think people behind me will say good things about you. The next item on the agenda is.
Public comments on this.
I understand, hold on. Is public comments on items that are not on the agenda. This is included. If you have a public comment on PG&E, that's welcome. Wally?
Yes, sir. I'm giving my slip to George. I'm Walter Sleeth and I live at two-two-seven Cotelpa, which is in Lininwood. I am quite sure that about a hundred yards to the east of me, there is one of these transmission lines going through Lininwood. I appreciate the well-meaning of PG&E's representatives here today and I very much appreciate the active questions that the council has asked. However, it seems clear to many of us in the town that the following at a minimum should be reviewed by the town. What really is the purpose or goal of what is being proposed? Is there any precedent in California or other states for this type of action? And what evidence, real evidence, does PG&E have for the necessity of this action? Where exactly are these gas lines? Are they all in some sort of PG&E public utility easement? Secondly, what danger is offered to justify what appears to be an extreme action when for over a hundred years, there seems to have been little or no problem? A distinction must be made between sewer and water lines carrying water, which attract roots, and gas lines, which I don't believe attract roots. And actions remove trees or damage their root systems, a clear impact on our environment and ecology here in Atherton cannot just be presented and considered accepted. Not only should an environmental impact study be completed, but also consideration by both the town's environmental program committee and planning commission should be required before the council decides anything. PG&E, if granted its request, must certainly indemnify the town and its residents, presumably putting up a bond to guarantee against any damage or to cover replacement of trees. We need to hear the situations in other places that you had a problem so we can avoid similar problems here. I would like to reserve further time to respond when PG&E has put on record its case for taking any actions after sufficient time to analyze what they present. This should not be an action which anyone needs to rush into. We don't need to take an axe to these trees prior to seeing if PG&E has alternative means to safely handle the issue they see. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Wally. Is there any other public comment? Okay, hearing no other public comment, the next item on the agenda is report, have the report section.
Mr. Mayor, uh, city council met in closed session. There were two items. The first item had a committee, uh, membership of the city council, is a public employee, employee performance evaluation of the city manager. There was discussion raised, a subcommittee is going to meet with the city manager to talk about some of the issues and, um, will be reviewed further at a upcoming meeting. The second item was a conference with legal counsel existing litigation, um, having to do with high-speed rail. Um, council member Lemprous was disqualified because of living within proximity of the railroad tracks. And the city council discussed it further and agreed to continue this matter to an upcoming meeting.
Okay, thank you. Uh, city manager.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Members of the council, you've got the report staffs here to answer any questions. I don't have any further comments.
Excellent. Excellent.
Excellent.
Excellent.
Like a novel. Can't put them.
Okay, moving on. Uh, the next item on the agenda is consent counters. Do they want our council to remove any items from the consent counter? Hearing none, as, uh, does any members of the public wish to remove any items from the consent counter? Hearing none, I would show approved.
Second.
State of course.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. The next item on the agenda is a public hearing to consider an ordinance amending the Atherton Municipal Code, chapter seventeen dot fourteen regarding basements. Lisa?
Good evening. Uh, this item's being recommended by the planning commission. Uh, they've had several years of experience now reviewing basements that were required to obtain a special structure permit from the revisions that were made by the city council. Um, I think it was just prior to two thousand and nine under the basement regulations. And based on their experience, they have, um, a few kind of minor tweaks really to make to the ordinance. And the first one relates to non-habitable basement areas under accessory buildings. So currently, that would require a special structure permit and that might be, uh, storage, uh, could be homeowner's storage of materials or it could be used for equipment, is what we see commonly. So right now, that would require a special structure permit from the planning commission. And what the planning commission saw was those were pretty routine. They didn't have light well associated with it. Really was very minimal impact, if any, associated with that. So they felt that was an item that could be referred to and approved by staff rather than the planning commission. Um, and then the second item relates to minor extensions beyond the footprint of the main building. Currently, you're permitted to have a basement directly under the footprint of the main building, approved by staff. Any extension beyond that, what we call kind of squaring off if it's a U shape or irregular shape, requires going before the planning commission for a special structure permit. We've seen some recent, um, projects come forward that were rather minor in nature where, um, it did square off and it was maybe where they had a, um, a setback front entry that they wanted to square off the basement. And so the planning commission felt that those could be approved at a staff level, but they have a limitation on that. So the extension is a maximum of a hundred and forty square feet of combined area. So you can have a couple of little ones or one that was no more than a hundred and forty square feet. And then the third area is, you know, relating to their experience, um, relating to the, the size of a basement. So the current code allows a maximum of a hundred and thirty percent of the first floor area for basement area with a special structure permit from the planning commission. We took a look back at the items that were reviewed and approved by planning commission and the largest one was just under a hundred and twenty square feet. Based on their experience in reviewing these projects, they felt, a hundred and twenty percent, excuse me, thank you. Um, based on their experience in reviewing these items, they felt, you know, that was probably about the max they, they felt comfortable with. Um, so rather than have this a hundred and thirty percent out there that somebody may design to and come forward with, um, they felt that it would be, you know, more appropriate to have a code that, you know, fits the expectations of the planning commission. Um, these changes, all of the, that I discussed, were reviewed by, um, the building roundtable that we have those luncheons with and they were supportive of all the changes. Um, they, they liked the two, obviously, that would go to a staff level 'cause that streamlined the process, but they also appreciated having a code in place that was more predictable. Um, and that's what, you know, they would like to see through the process. Um, so I have the ordinance before you and happy to answer any of your questions.
I have a better question. Is there a size limit, uh, for the under accessory building storage area?
It's limited to the footprint of the accessory building. So whatever the maximum area of that accessory building is, it could be no larger than that.
Because accessory buildings can be a couple thousand square feet, I think.
They could. It's a twelve hundred square feet per acre of total accessory building area. So yes, it could be.
It seems that a lot to have non-habitable light wells for, uh.
Strictly non-habitable storage space as defined in the building code.
But does the fire department have any kind of egress issues of having, you know, if you're in your storage area, uh, two thousand square feet or more and you're.
Yeah, I don't know that.
Is there one, one entrance, one way in, one way out? Light wells, you know, add, uh, an escape route also?
So there's a distinction between a light well and then just a stairwell, that would be the exit route.
Right.
Um, it may be, I don't know the building code detail, but maybe based on the size, there may be a need for that secondary extra exit. And they could have just a stairwell, but if it was a solid door and it wasn't a light well, then that would be permitted as long as it complied with the setback requirements.
Yeah, so, so there are requirements under the building code, so based on any sleeping rooms. So sleeping rooms are what requires, uh, egress. Uh, and so a lot of times we're seeing a coordination of the light well as also an egress route for those rooms. And there are requirements of, of what is met to be able to qualify for egress. And the building department and fire department do ensure and inspect and do plan reviews to make sure those are met.
But it's not, I'm, I'm talking about a total square footage area. It's a large.
Strictly storage.
It's a large storage area and there's only one way in, one way out and you're kind of in there messing around in your storage area and I don't know.
So, yeah, so it's a storage area?
Yeah.
And I mean, it's, it's, it's not required, but that's one of those issues. So depending on if you want to s, to designate or set, you know, a certain square footage limit for anything that's outside of a sleeping area that you would want to designate, then we, we can actually work closely with the, with the building official. And it would have to be something that we put into the ordinance, uh, with the next code adoption cycle, which is gonna come up in a little over a year. So if we do see that need, then we can address it.
I'll just, you know.
Yeah, I mean, we certainly haven't seen any that large that were strictly storage. I think the, the strictly storage ones are the smaller areas in their basements.
Quite another question?
Mm-hmm.
Uh, are there any public comments? Uh, bring back council comments.
Yeah, I was, I say, I wish that you'd brought this around, the squaring off of the basement when we were doing our house because we were caught under that and we had to go exactly to the, you know, and it cost us a lot more money to do that rather than just being able to, okay, we square off the basement, there you go. And I don't know if anybody saw in the almanac, the twelve thousand square foot basement in Woodside with all of the little, uh, no, it's important.
Woodside.
Was it Woodside?
It is Woodside, it's, and.
It doesn't, totally different, but I mean, yeah, it was amazing, so, okay.
I like emotions, let's just, I'll move ahead.
Right, but I, and way of reading.
And, okay.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Passes. Moving on to the next public hearing regarding adoption of ordinance amending the Atherton Municipal Code regarding special ed.
Thank you. The ordinance was introduced at your last meeting. It is now prepared for adoption. There's been no changes since your last meeting. I have nothing to add to the report.
Is there any, um, question? Is there any public comment? Hearing none, uh, is there any comment from the council? Listen. Motion for a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Great. I guess past you there most quickly. Now moving to the regular agenda. The first item on the agenda is an update about El Camino real estate and bicycle safety concerns.
And I don't have any additional information, but that's what's in the staff report again is for information.
Any questions? Uh, is there any public comment on this matter? Hearing none of this. This is just a received and bought.
It's, it's a little more than, I'm sorry. My answer's a little, little more than that because, um, I, I, I know this is for forty thousand dollars, muscle out. There was a fatality that was, if not in Atherton, within a few feet or inches of Atherton. And I said, I, I was walking my dog and, and looked up and saw the, the traffic on El Camino, which I've now seen three times and I know what that means. It means either it's been a fatality or it's been a pretty, something bad's happening. So I, you know, walked up to it. I just, I just wanna make sure that we are doing everything we possibly can to keep attention and, and pressure on this, uh, situation. We don't have control over it and I understand that. I know staff's doing quite a lot of work and chief, I'd like to specifically commend, uh, the, the police department, which has done an awful lot of work enforcement along that stretch and I think it's, it's been very productive and useful. Um, but I just note that we're gonna have something up if all goes well, um, on, uh, on the draw in two thousand fifteen, hopefully. Uh, November is it, still that.
Well, what, yes, and, and that's really a function of gaining our approach agreement with Caltrans, but it is moving along. We actually already received comments from Caltrans on our plans that we submitted. Uh, our consultant's now working on responding to those comments and in, uh, less than two weeks, we'll have those comments back to Caltrans. Uh, but we're still hoping to, uh, receive our approach agreement in, um, the August, September timeframe. Once we do that, then we'll be able to go out to bid in the, um, October, November timeframe as far as going out to bid, which means that, um, uh, the beacon will be under construction, uh, you know, in early two thousand sixteen.
And, I just wanna finish on that, that then we, we're also, two, two additional beacons are likely going in in two thousand seventeen.
Correct, and that's part of a Caltrans project.
Yeah, I just wanna, I, I think what we need to do, if there anything we can, to make sure those times don't slip because it's not safe right now. And, and I think those will make a big difference, but right now, it's, it's not safe. And I think we do whatever we can, including if possible, get someone from Caltrans down here and talk to us about what the plans are and report on a somewhat regular basis on the timing of those, those lights and anything else that's going on, that'll help me out.
Yeah, and I, I'll reiterate what Michael's saying to the chief is that, you know, statistic wise, not the word followings, but the fact of the matter is that the enforcement out there and pinpointing our problem areas is effectively working. You know, I know that the fatality occurred right on the border line, but the reality was we've got a good reduction in speed and a good security. So, thank you.
Well, seven hundred and five citations in six months shows that we're actively working on it. And I have heard this from residents that they're appreciative of it, so.
So I, I go ahead. I, I think this was a, a good report, you know, we're constantly, all of us are constantly asking, what are you guys doing? You know, especially every time there's an incident. This is an excellent summary showing that actually there is a lot going on and anything we can do to get a little bit more publicity on all these key things, I think, would, would help to, you know, help the residents to understand that there's a lot going on and there are people other than just ourselves involved in it, but, uh, things are really happening. We are making a change and, and, and again, that's a great, uh, great summary. And chief, yeah, did a good job on, on all the, I, I constantly see the, the bike patrol out there, just, it was over the Atherton border with, with a string of cars pulled over.
But not a motorbike. Right.
Yeah, not, not bicycle.
The, the motor.
But if you wanna, why, if I even have bike officers, I, I would be supportive of, uh, bicycles if you have them.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's a pretty.
So, so I'm, I'm, I'm really happy to see, uh, the hawk beacons, uh, moving along, but it is a little painful to, uh, work with Caltrans about, uh, Alejandra and Isabella. So, um, again, I was in Scottsdale and they've got these ginormous, uh, hawk beacons and a lot of signage. It will change the look of El Camino significantly when we do have them and hopefully it will, um, uh, slow, uh, down the cars, the traffic, uh, to the point where, uh, our pedestrians can, uh, cross, uh, more safely, pedestrian bicyclists. Um, San Jose on the news I heard is, uh, reducing its speed limits on four of their major streets, uh, just now, uh, to try to slow the traffic down, to reduce, uh, fatalities and injuries, uh, to their, uh, bicyclists and pedestrians. And if anybody's seen the Jeff Toomlin. And if anybody's seen the Jeff Toomlin traffic design presentation, there's a graph where the faster cars go, obviously, the more fatalities you have. And I think if you get over thirty-five miles an hour, you really do increase the risk of fatalities, not only because of the impact, but because cars cannot, the, the drivers, their peripheral vision gets narrower, and so you don't see the people on the outside lanes coming across. And the fact that we have a six-lane freeway going through our one point six miles of El Camino is one, and then it extends to four lanes when we have returning lanes take, to take effect. It's very dangerous for pedestrians and bicycles to try to cross over. So, I think this is a step in the right direction, something that we can do within a reasonable amount of time. And I'm happy that we're partnering with the fire department for Almond Draw for that safety, and it will help you and your responders coming out of that. So, if, if we need to do anything politically to, you know, push on Caltrans with letters from the council, maybe get our representative involved, if you're locally, some woman or congresswoman, you know, to write a letter to say, you know, really, we need to make El Camino safe, safer. Can we expedite this? Is that something that we can do?
Staff has certainly support that. We've exhausted our staff and pressured them.
Gordon, yeah, Rich Gordon. I mean.
I think he said something about that, and then also.
Yeah, I think we need to take it, we need to ratchet it up to the next level and, you know, write a letter from the council and get, you know, signatures from all of our representatives.
And one of the things in the staff report was the mention of the subway lane improvement of safety is part of the bike master plan. That's going to start some significant community outreach in the fall. Would you like us to maybe bring back representative from Caltrans to a published council meeting? I, I think that would be. To update on that project as well as apply pressure in respect to this.
I, I think on the whole El Camino quarter, we're including Selby, Isabella, Almond Draw, and Alejandra.
To just keep reiterating that, bring them back in November.
And I would think thereafter, you know, a quarterly status report on where our plans are and, you know, what we're doing to make sure that we make the, the secondary date.
Yeah, well, you've got the format.
Yeah.
You know, in the report, you can kind of, you know, plug in new information and stuff. And I want to again emphasize the fact that we, I just lost it, that what we were saying is to, huh, I just lost it.
Well, let me, let me just say, if, if we're going to that, Caltrans in August or September, if we could have a report on that at the September meeting, I, I'd like to move this hot beacon on Almond Draw forward as quickly as we can. If there's any possibility of, you know, I'm sure we won't have the RFP ready by September, but we get a report back, then we'll figure that RFP out by October.
Yeah, we're moving forward.
Well, yes, and in fact, it's, it's under design. And so, the, the project will be ready to bid in anticipation of getting the encroachment permit. But we will not be able to bid the project until we have that encroachment permit in hand. And, and hopefully, at September, we'll be able to report to the council that we have received the permit and the project is out to bid.
And just to be clear, I want to make sure staff understands that I think the unanimous sentiment of the council is speed is important. And, and, you know, we're pursuing this apart because Caltrans has been so slow at getting it done. We'd like to get something out there. And we, that's something, you know, the thing we have designed here, we'd like to get out. So, whatever you need to expedite, we'd like to have that.
Sure.
Can I follow? I, I.
You captured it.
I did, I captured. It's the fatalities, because, you know, the, the graph goes back to two thousand five. And, you know, I know that in that Menlo Park section of El Camino, right across from Alejandra there, you know, from Valparaiso up to Watkins, there are more fatal collisions that have happened. And somehow, I think we need to capture them, because it's like right there a part of our town as well.
So, we're going to take and file that, and we're going to move it to out of eighteen, which is a neighborhood traffic management program for.
Yes. As council knows, that we are moving forward with the development of a traffic calming policy in the form of a neighborhood traffic management program. And one of the purposes of this, of tonight's item is to get council direction with regards to what physical devices should be included in the draft program that we will be putting together. To get us to that point, Keith Higgins, who is with Hatchmont McDonald, who is our consultant, will be providing a overview presentation, talking about the, the purpose of, you know, their traffic policies, the types of various physical devices, and, you know, how it's used and how effective it is. And then that'll be followed by Chief Shaplehaman with Menlo Park, who will also have a brief PowerPoint presentation to, to discuss, you know, some of their desires and observations with regards to traffic calming. And then, once that is then, then we'll want to bring it back to council to, again, get that direction with regards to what devices we should be including in our policies. So, Keith?
Good evening. My name's Keith Higgins with Hatchmont McDonald, and I'm going to give you a really quick overview of the neighborhood traffic management program. And if you have any questions as I'm going through, well, you can stop. I think I'm going to, just for the sake of time, I'll try to go fast, because I think you guys are probably already kind of familiar with these kind of programs, but this is, oh, I gotta hit the middle button. Nobody?
Yeah. There you go.
Okay. So, the, this is an outline of the presentation for tonight. So, just a quick definition of traffic calming, and then what is a neighborhood traffic management program, why cities adopt a program or a traffic calming policy, a couple of the unique characteristics of the town of Atherton. And then we'll go into the components of a traffic calming policy in terms of its structure, and then the devices. There's really a level one and a level, then level two strategies. And then what our approach is to actually getting through this whole process of bringing a policy before the, the town council. So, what is traffic calming? And I think everybody's seen the devices. There are a lot of them in Menlo Park. So, but it's basically to manage traffic flow, speeds, and volumes. And this is in residential neighborhoods as opposed to El Camino or, or other types of arterial. So, this is focused on residential neighborhood streets. And examples there, you can see the, the speed feedback signs, and we see those around Menlo Park, speed humps or speed lumps. And then you can even do full closures or partial closures, which are pretty, a little more radical type of device. So, what is a neighborhood traffic management program? It's really to establish guidelines for where, how are you going to implement these kind of devices? So, what are good candidate locations? What are, what is the toolbox of devices that the town would be open to use? And how are they actually implemented and then managed, monitored? And in some cases, they can actually be removed if the neighborhood feels that the device is ineffective or the cure's worse than the disease. So, that can even happen. So, why cities adopt a traffic calming policy? We've been involved in projects where we were asked to do a traffic calming project, but the town didn't have a policy yet, which makes it a little bit difficult to decide, well, is this really even a good candidate location? What are the criteria that we want to use and not just do it on, on either a haphazard manner or just reactive to complain from the neighborhood or some, something like that perceived issues? What really is a real issue that's recognized in this industry and that, and that type of thing? And of course, a lot of the towns and cities around Atherton already have them in place. So, unique characteristics of, of the town of Atherton. Of course, Atherton is, is rural in nature. Curved gutters, sidewalks are infrequent. We have arterial and collector streets that are long and straight, but most of the, or a lot of the neighborhood streets are more curb linear. There's fantastic tree canopies. The collision history, there are pedestrian bicycle accidents. And the collisions tend to be more located, well, like we've, you were talking a lot about El Camino already. And of course, that's not even a candidate location that we'd even be considering as a part of this policy. We have cut through traffic from the Alameda over to El Camino, and some of that could even spill over in other neighborhoods. Around the schools, of course, those are sensitive locations that require usually more consideration. This is the emergency route map for the town of Atherton. And actually, some of the blue lines, which are the borders of, of the town, are streets themselves and are probably should be red as well. And these are ones that I think we'll be hearing from Harold about how significant these are with regard to protecting emergency response times. And those are going to be really important to protect. And so, I know Harold's going to be talking about that a little bit later. So, then the components of a traffic calming policy, what's the process, you know, to get someone to come in, make an application, go back and try to see if there's really neighborhood support, to try to see if there's really an issue or not, going through the study process? And how do you decide what are the appropriate devices? And then how those are implemented? And then surveying the neighborhood after, there's before and after studies and so forth, and then actually implementing. So, these all, the whole process is outlined. And there's been so, if you go to, from one town to the next and you see their policies, like Menlo Park, I think has a very good policy. But we have policies from a lot of other towns, and there's pieces of other policies that are really applicable. People kind of polish, take somebody else's policy and kind of polish them up. And so, that's kind of like a starting point. But Atherton does have some unique characteristics, and we really want to have a good collaborative process as we go with the police department and the fire department. And then, of course, the public outreach, we'll be talking about that, just to do the policy itself. So, now the toolbox, there's, like I mentioned, there's level one and level two. Level one are the passive devices. So, really, it's, that gets back into education and encouragement and enforcement. Those are three of the Es. There's a fourth E, and the fourth E is the engineering. And that's where you get into actual some type of physical device, some of which could be signs, pavement markings, the speed radar trailers can be effective. And so, those are the passive devices where it really doesn't require a big capital investment. Then we get into the level two, which are physical controls. And there's actually two types. There's speed reduction and volume reduction. So, on speed reduction, that's where you get into speed humps and speed lumps, traffic circles, and devices of that nature. So, it actually physically changes the characteristic of the street, but actually doesn't physically prevent traffic from being able to go through as opposed to volume reductions, which are fuller, partial closures, and are generally that, that type of device. Chicanes are another type, I don't know if you've heard the term chicane, essentially like a narrowing, but a lot of times should create a slalom effect. And those have certain negative consequences too. But they're, they're more of a speed control measure. And like I mentioned here, of course, negatively impacts emergency response times. And let's see, so the approach here, when I mentioned what the components are of a neighborhood traffic management program, basically, those are all here. Again, and let's see, the, what I wanted to mention here was the qualifying criteria, the third bullet down, is really an important one. From what, from my experience working in different towns, the, the criteria can be the traffic volume, or the traffic volumes above a level that's really acceptable in a residential neighborhood. And so, you can set that number, and usually, it's based upon daily traffic volumes. So, if you were to actually go out and study it, you'd go out and count the cars. And if they're above that, your threshold level, well, then that's a candidate location to consider installing some type of measures. I've seen those thresholds set too low, and then the next thing you can have is an avalanche of requests, and then an avalanche of qualifying locations, when if you go out there and you look at it and you go, wow, is this really that bad? Just as, as an objective third party looking at it. And another one is speed. Another one is what percentage of the traffic that's using that street is cut through. And so, that, that gets into some of the volume things. But, but even the speed reduction can be a disincentive for cut through traffic. So, that can actually have a secondary effect in reducing traffic volumes also. The fifth bullet down, describe relevant traffic calming devices. Mike was mentioning, that's one of the really important ones we want to talk to you about tonight. And I know Harold wants to discuss that. Funding sources is, can be another issue. And how to prioritize if you do have a bunch of locations and you have these level two devices that people are considering. And if, if the town comes up with, say, well, we're going to put a budget of a hundred thousand dollars to do traffic calming throughout the town. And it's going to be, is it on a first come, first served basis? You get a number of them. You can actually put a point system together and, and then rank them by what has the most urgent need. So, then that's one way to implement it. But I think this, this whole process kind, kind of helps staff, it helps the city council, so you don't just get these random requests to do something. You have some objective criteria to, to be able to say yes or no, whatever. And so, you have the, you can come up with what the appropriate answer is. Of course, after you go through this, my, my recommendation, as we were discussing this at the staff level, was I would rather set the criteria to be somewhat restrictive, so you end up with fewer candidate locations to start. I mean, this is just my own opinion. So, that, because you can always throttle it to say, well, look, this is a little too stringent. And we can say, instead of fifteen hundred vehicles a day, we can go to twelve hundred vehicles a day. Or some, you know, some speed, you know, five miles above the posted speed limit to three miles or whatever, whatever it is. And, but if you start with it lenient, and then you try to tighten it later, that's usually a tougher move. So, that's why I kind of think it's better to start tight. And you can always adjust a policy. As my, I know it's not easy. You've got to go through more hearings and things. But I still think that gives you control. And you can always make exceptions to a policy too. I think it gives you more control. Identify implementation process and issues. And there's going to be, there, there's a lot of detail through this whole thing. That's why we've got to go through a whole process. So, we're just kind of touching on it tonight. Aesthetic and streetscape design standards, we think that might be important to add as an element that might not be in other towns' policies. Let's see. And let's see, approach. So, one of the other things about our approach is we do have public workshops, and we're going to really do our best to try to get public involvement in this whole process. So, we're going to try to be creative in, in, in doing that. But we really want to have some good interaction and collaboration, just to kind of try to get the whole policy, get the framework established. And it'll be interesting to see who comes out and, you know, who already has problems and they want to express what their problems are right now. And we can kind of interact with them and try to come up with something that's reasonable to bring to city council. And let's see, so this one, it's hard to read. You, you have that in your packet, and it talks about the various types of measures. The top two for the yellow, green, blue, light blue and dark blue are devices that are more speed control types of devices. The volume control devices are in purple, which include the full closure, partial closure. And those are the ones that I think are very, there's, there's times when they are appropriate to use, because we've used them in, in certain situations. But they're really not what I would call is the highly recommended ones. And let's see, the next one is questions.
Question?
On one of your charts very early, you said traffic calming devices. Oh, by the way, not allowed on emergency routes. And I may or may not know that you did have a meeting with the fire district board and the chief and some of his staff, and he said that, that actually we could do some calming, and there were some mechanisms that they weren't necessarily, I mean, he doesn't want to see them all over the place, but that they were possibilities for going in there. Whereas your chart says not allowed. And so, you know, I, I take exception to not allowed, because, you know, he said that there'd be some that actually are lower, and you have the, the axles can go through. But the chief also said that he also has a fair number of broken axles, and so they won't be like those too much. So. So, but they are allowed and, you know, depending on the requirements on the street, we might want to go ahead and stuff like that. The other comment was that it looks, and I know we saw this before, but your color chart on the emergency routes. It says that every major street in Atherton is an emergency cut through.
Well, you know what I'm going to say is that we could start, yeah, this is a starting point. And we haven't really gotten into, to really having the dialogue and the collaboration and things. And it's just kind of like, and maybe I should also correct one thing. For example, around Menlo-Atherton High School, there's some of the radar speed, the feedback signs. Those kind of devices are not going to impede emergency response time. So there's some, some of the level one devices could be appropriate on the emergency response routes. And so I think it, again, it's going to have to be collaborative. I think we're going to hear from the fire department how significant these issues are. And then come up with a policy that everybody can live with. And that's what our objective would be.
Does anyone else have a question or clarification?
Just a question. You said that oftentimes for policies, you'll look to good city policies or plans and sort of create problems. Now, you mentioned Menlo Park, but are you aware of other cities that are similar, more similar to Atherton? Meaning a quasi-mur代 community that's surrounded by, you know, larger towns on either end and has thorough barriers cutting through? And what would they be, the cities in mind or towns in mind?
I haven't checked, say Hillsborough. I've done work in rural areas in Carmel Valley, Pebble Beach. City of Carmel, we did their citywide master plan. And they're not really into adding capacity to their street system. They don't want a single traffic signal in their city. But, so we have worked on towns like that. In Morgan Hill, up in the hills on the east side of Morgan Hill, we put in speed humps. Like we have an eight percent, eight percent's the grade, maximum grade that you'll see oftentimes. We put them in on eight percent grades on rural roads that have no sidewalks up around Holiday Lake Estates up there near Anderson Reservoir. So we've done them in those kind of instances. And, but if you have any ideas on policies, I'm all ears. If you have any other towns, we have maybe a dozen policies that we're using. But, yeah, that would, yeah, you could let Mike know, and Mike could relay to us. And we'll start trying to cull out of these what we think are really good things to plug in on this. We've done these policies in other towns, and a lot of it is, it's kind of like a lot of other municipal code policies. They're, you know, some of them are similar from one city to the next. And, but then there was always the unique aspects that any town or city might have. So, yeah, I'd be real interested if you have some other ideas. You were hoping I would.
That's for sure. Did you want to make a statement?
Well, actually, we have a presentation, so we're going to blow that up. Hopefully we'll answer your questions, but maybe not great anymore. So maybe John, if you can shoot the slides for me. So, thank you for having us this evening, I appreciate it. This is John Johnson, he's our fire marshal, he's your fire marshal. And the audience we have from the board of directors, three of them, but they're not all sitting together, so it's kind of a quorum this evening. Director Karoli was the president, Director Solano the vice president, and Director Allison is here with us. So you can see we're very interested, obviously, in what you're doing. And, you know, I got to compliment staff, you know, George, Mike, Ed, and then the contractors that are working with you. This is the first time the fire district has actually been in a room, in a meeting, before these devices, in some cases have actually even installed. So, you know, kudos to you that we're on the front end and have, you know, can really have a good discussion about what the trade offs are going to be, what the real issues are, and why we're different in terms of public safety, which sometimes gets wrapped all into one category. Then let's say a squad car, you know, and I'll go over the weights and the sizes a little bit with the fire apparatus that you are familiar with that come out to your homes. You know, the photograph kind of says it all. I deleted a number of slides that you saw before in the presentation that we did to you before. But, you know, I don't think anybody in this room can dispute that if you have an emergency, you want responders there as quickly as possible. Simply because typically it's a better outcome the quicker that they can respond to your home. Whether it's a medical call, whether it's a fire, whether it's a, you know, pipe being struck in the ground, it's a PGE pipe. Whatever it is, you know, it's the quicker the better. And we'll go over some of the geographic slides, you know, a little bit differently than what you saw before. And our mission, very simple, protection of life and preservation of property, you know, is what we do. You know, I can make a lot out of that, but the reality is it's just that simple and just that difficult at times. And, you know, the safety of our personnel, I spoke to you a little about that before. Our personnel are going to take risks, that's what they do. They do it well, we train them to do that. You know, we hope that after all the training, they have good instincts. We can't predict everything that's going to happen. Sometimes bad things happen to them as well. So again, the sooner that we can take control of the situation, the better. And again, typically outcomes for them and the citizens are going to be better. So again, protection of life and property. There it is. So we looked at, you know, the information, I think we went, John, one past one slide, go back for one second.
I can do it.
There it is. So as you know, we talked about deployment before. I know not everybody in the room has heard this, but there are seven stations in the fire district. We talked about deployment with you before. You know, one station is in Atherton, but essentially you're served by five stations immediately that you're part of the response area, which we'll show. So it's a network of stations, it's configuration response units. We have a staffing model, minimum staffing every day. It's not specific to the town, it's specific to the district. We use a movement cover model with other agencies in the county, specifically Woodside and Redwood City. So we always have coverage, even when there are multiple emergencies. And we use an automatic aid and a single dispatch center in the county, so it's pretty homogenous. We don't have to, we don't have four engine ones showing up at a call because those stations are sequentially numbered in the county as well. So a lot of the old days, the confusion, the slower system, you know, asking for things has been eliminated. You know, daily, you could have an engine for Redwood City to call in your jurisdiction. And the system is seamless. It doesn't have an issue with that, it's done regularly both ways, and that's how we operate. Next slide, John. When we looked at the traffic control devices, and this is using the Memo Part information that we went over when we met again in advance of this meeting with the contractors, with staff. We looked at level one, which is the express model, and all of those are acceptable. When we look at level two, they're not acceptable on primary response routes because we start to see delays in response. However, as we did talk about, there are some exceptions. And, you know, John's here with a standard that we use. Again, we're typically not in front of these issues, we're behind them. So we see, we see things happen like humps, lumps, bumps, tables are put in. No one's asked the fire agency, you know, what's that going to do to the response time? And then what's the cumulative effect of that? In other words, you know, between the station and the call, how many of these things already exist? And I know, you know, I don't always agree with some of the people that are out there talking about, you know, streetscapes and different things, but, you know, traffic is like water. It's going to find the path of least resistance. And so, you know, we can have long debates about people biking and walking. But, you know, the reality is, people are driving cars. And they're driving wherever they need to go, the fastest way that they can find to get there. And if that's through your town, a different town, I mean, you know, again, it's going to go somewhere. So by putting things on one street, we then set somebody else to have traffic go through a different neighborhood, which we've seen before and, you know, creates problems. So traffic circles, street closures, speed bumps, humps, lumps, bumps, speed tables, channels, chokers, bull bouts, chicanes, angle points, I didn't remember what came up with all these terms. But median barriers and islands, yeah, we typically don't like those. But we really don't like them when we don't know how they're being installed. And not being installed to a standard that really helps us. So if you go to the next slide, and what do I mean by that? You know, I hate to say it, and this is no, this happened many years ago. In fact, I was a firefighter working at the station, at our station five in North Fair Oaks when this all occurred. And the district was put behind the eight ball with these devices going in. And there was a lot of traffic that went through that area, there's no doubt about it. But if you ever go through the North Fair Oaks area, drive between the fire station and Atherton and count how many devices we already have to go through to get out of that neighborhood. And that's not helping the collective good. It may help slow down traffic in that neighborhood. And I would profess to you, because I just tried to do this with the county when they repaved the roads, why are there so many? Because, you know, we're not even considering the negative effect that these things have had on response times to the community. So this is a great example. You know, if you look at the left, you see the chicane, and that's what it is. It's again, a narrowing channel. If you look at the wheel distance, so that's putting this particular one on Edison, right, John, this is Edison. We end up with the tire right up against the curb, and we have five and a half inches between the other tire and the other curb. It's ridiculous. You know, so we're talking about not only slowing the unit down, but, you know, almost making it very difficult. So with about, you know, two and three quarter inches on either side of a piece of equipment that weighs forty-three thousand pounds to thread the needle. You know, we're going to have slower response time. We understand it's there to slow down vehicles. But, you know, again, no one came to us and said, what would the reasonable width of one of these be? And would this be the right device here to do, you know, not only slow down traffic, but to work with you as a response entity for the benefit of the community? That didn't happen here, and it continues not to happen. So I applaud you for engaging us because, you know, we have obviously something to say and to add in this type of, these situations. So if we move past this slide, you know, again, we talked about what are our response profiles? You know, and you've seen this before, again, for a single engine typical, for a medical incident, alarm soundings, odor calls, any type of investigation. Traffic accidents will get two engines, a truck and a battalion chief, a full assignment. Three engines, a truck and a battalion chief, a structured fire, five engines, a truck and two battalion chiefs. And so on, as we go into the greater alarm packages and special packages for response. This is all a bit pre-calculated. But again, all these aren't necessarily going to just come from one place, they're coming from all over. And depending upon how busy we are, units are out of service for other calls, for training, in a different jurisdiction, it's going to look a little bit different every time. Next slide. You've seen this one before as well. So you have five stations that protect you. Thirty-four percent of station one's coverage area is in your jurisdiction in the town of Atherton. Station three, the in-station town, seventy-nine percent. Station four, thirty-seven percent. Five, twenty-seven percent. And station six, twenty-eight percent. We're going to focus on station five in North Fair Oaks to kind of make the example. Next slide. So what we didn't have, and this is new that you didn't see, and again, the vendors haven't seen. This is the first time we really published a slide, thanks to the fire marshal and his staff. What we didn't know, we saw you last for our presentation, there's two hundred ninety-four calming devices already in the fire district. So it's district wide. Obviously similar hardware equipment, as you can see, and I mentioned already, when you have an engine that weighs forty-three thousand pounds, depending upon the type of device, it can be very difficult in the equipment. And the ladder truck, which is unique, but again, goes to different types of responses, it weighs seventy-six thousand pounds. So these are not small pieces of equipment. Again, comparing them in emergency response to law enforcement, it's not even the same. The primary response routes are critical to maintaining reasonable response times for everyone. The good news for Atherton is you have great response routes. Because you really haven't done a whole lot of traffic calming. But if you look around you, and I don't know if John's got the pointer, if he can point to station five on that. So if it gets up at the top. Oh, maybe not.
The pointer doesn't work.
Doesn't work? So the North Fair, if you go to the far left of the slide up there, and you see all those traffic control devices, that's North Fair Oaks. The engine to get from there into the town, as I mentioned, had to go, has to go through four devices just to start to get into the town of Atherton. And again, you know, even if we give you some of our standards and we change some of these devices, don't forget that you also have to have things like ambulances and police cars that respond. And what's the situation if you have someone? I'll use myself as an example. If someone breaks their neck and you put them in an ambulance and they have to drive over these certain types of devices, you know, how conducive is that to the population that's here? And I think I heard you mention earlier about your elderly population. There's no doubt. So, you know, we spend a lot of time in Atherton primarily for medical calls. So, you know, how does this help the residents you have when they have an emergency and need to be transported in a unit that's got to then navigate through those types of devices? So it's something to take into consideration moving forward. These, here's where the devices are outside your community. Again, on the primary response routes, we have twenty-one through the town. You again have excellent routes, minimal problems, which leads to what? Faster response times. They didn't include the three slides, the fire, the vehicle that got in the way of the train, and the medical call that we had to save, because all those were conducive upon, again, you know, very good response times. And I showed you those numbers before. You know, going to the North Fair Oaks engine five or station five, the cascading negative effect in that, in that community is for really people outside of it. So, you know, when they put those devices in, I'm pretty sure they didn't check with the town, you know, what happens when that engine that responds into the town of Atherton has to go through four devices just to get out of there? What's the negative effect on time to the town? Because, you know, that's another thing you need to look at. So, again, we also have a rail crossing to navigate, so there could be a train coming, as we all know. And then we also, you know, the district tries to operate under the common good premise, which I mentioned earlier, because you don't know where that fire truck is going. So, you know, these roadways are contiguous with Redwood City, not with, not just with Atherton, Menlo Park, Woodside, East Palo Alto. You know, we respond all around the area, and the engines come from different places based upon the type of call and the need. Next slide. You've seen this one before, that's kind of our response patterns, and those are the actual calls listed. You have a lighter footprint for the town of Atherton, but again, geographically, it's bigger lots. Typically, people, less people on a lot, so that, you know, your density is less. But nevertheless, you have a significant number of emergencies every year. We track these calls by the National Fire Protection Association, by station unit, by time, not by jurisdiction, which we'll start to look at, I think, this next year. And by agency, which means aid given and aid received to our neighbors. Because we want to make sure that's as reciprocal as it can be as well. On the final couple of slides here, and on our website, we haven't really released it publicly yet, our standards of cover assessment report is on our website now. We just finished it. The board just had a presentation, and what that spoke to is some of these things here, which is, we have thirteen, or sorry, fifteen key findings, two specific action items. And our desired outcomes would provide equitable response times to similar risk neighborhoods, provide for depth of response when multiple incidents occur, and provide a concentration of response forces in the core for high-risk venues. Now, fortunately, you don't have the same issues that the east side of the freeway has. Anybody that's ever tried to get over Marsh Road, Willa Road, University Avenue, we're seeing significant problems of our response times deteriorating getting over there. However, kind of the back and forth of response means that you also don't want units tied up over there that can't come back the other way into the town of Atherton when there's an emergency. So this kind of symbiotic, homogenous relationship with our units. So traffic is our enemy to some extent because it slows us down. But again, depending upon what you put in for control devices and how we channel traffic, that also can become problematic. And that's why, you know, I appreciate the conversation that we're having because I think it allows us to not only have a seat at the table, but to influence what will work and what won't work. I mean, our times are right now, and it's in the report, they're deteriorating. And if you look at the report, the interesting thing in the report that I noted in there, it's not that our stations are not in the right places, our stations are in great locations. It's not that we don't have great turnout times by our crews because we actually are above the standard for how fast our crews are able to get out of the station. The common dispatch center, again, reduced response times based upon one center, and they do a very good job. All that said, what's killing us is traffic. That's where we're losing time because we just can't safely get to where we need to get as fast as we like to get there. And there's one thing, and I don't talk about it too often, but I'll tell you. I would love for my, you know, I put ten seconds as the typical per-device, you know, delay in response, right? That's the standard answer. These guys have probably heard that before. Depending upon the type of device, if it's a speed bump, hump, bump, bump table, there's a method that we can use, and I know people in cars can do the same thing, which is called punching. Which means you speed up and you hit that thing faster and harder. And the system in your car, the shock absorbers, the suspension system absorbs that. There's a reason our rigs are in more often for suspension issues and steering box issues. You know, I would love to say our folks slow down like I would love for them to do on every one of these devices to make sure that we don't incur damage. every one of these devices, to make sure that we don't incur damage on the equipment, but they're firefighters. When you hear that we have a call and somebody's in trouble, based upon the radio traffic or the necessity of that call to get there quickly, they're going to do what they're going to do, and it's hard on the equipment. So, you know, again, it's not just about slowing down. Sometimes we know we can speed up, and, you know, it's not what I would like, but I also know that people want to make sure that response times don't deteriorate. Nobody wants that more than a crew and a piece of equipment rushing to get to an emergency when they hear there's a significant problem. So, you know, it's hard to take the firefighter out of the firefighter because of the traffic problem, and, you know, you need to know that. You know, it's, again, it's not what we like to talk about, but it's the real world. So last, last slide, any questions? If you have any answer. And John actually has a handout for you with the standard on the speed bump, hump, bump table devices, which if we put a channel in them for the wheels on the apparatus, would be a way in which we would say, okay, those types of devices, as much as we don't particularly like them, because you can't do the same thing for the ambulance, you can't do the same thing for the squad car and the battalion chief's vehicles made for the emergency equipment, the larger equipment. It is a way to kind of be able to use those types of devices, so mayor's correct, I said that in the last presentation, so, you know, there is that standard. But again, we're typically not asked at the beginning of one of these processes for information. We're asked while they're either going in or they've gone in and we discover them, which has happened. When I was a firefighter, we literally went and tried to go down the street on a response and found out the street had been turned into a dead end in the eastern portion of Menlo Park, and nobody ever told us. So, you know, again, you know, I appreciate being here on the front end of this discussion, and we're happy to answer any questions here.
Thank you, Chief, for admitting to having you be here, be a part of this partnership.
Thank you.
I want to see if there's any public comment. And then I'll bring you back to Council Bill.
So, so Chief, and actually it was quite impressive, a number of, of traffic calming devices outside of Atherton.
Yes.
Um, what are you doing to work with the county for North Fair Oaks and Menlo Park, especially in the area of our highest risk? Because I saw a ton of them over on the other side of the freeway, which is, we have all the apartment buildings, and you shared with us, that's your biggest issue, and you're trying to get the, and the biggest problem with getting the, the trucks over there. What are you, what are you doing with them to reduce those? Because it's kind of like, first guy that got them in, got them in, and, and, and now we don't want anybody else from that, so.
Well, I think that's, you know, it's a good point. I, you know, we're not saying, "Don't put them in," but we're saying, "Let's work together to do whatever we need to do."
Yeah, yeah, but, but what are you doing with these other?
So, and I'll let, I'll let John speak to that in a second, but I'll tell you this. You're, so this is the first meeting where we've let out that we have almost three hundred of these in the district. Nobody knows that, we've surveyed that. Some are trees, if you see some in Atherton, those are trees. So that's, that's not a bad thing, hopefully they're not, you're a PG right away, but, you know, at the end of the day, there's trees there. So those are somewhat of an impediment. Atherton's street grid, you know, with winding roads at times, with a canopy sometimes is also a deterrent, as we've talked about, for traffic speeds and so forth. To your question, if you go in that Standards of Cover Report, you're going to see areas of high call volume that we shade, and, and to the specific question, again, for let's say Station Five, you're right, those, that area that has the traffic control devices, that's not the problem. The problem's outside where that engine needs to go. This is the first time I think anybody's ever done a real good job of identifying that. One more key point before John starts, to specifically answer your question. We weren't satisfied with the typical street number count of vehicles in this report that we have, well, that's on our website. So we pushed the vendor who used a, a, a system, it's called HERE, and what it is, it monitors road sensors, speed. And I would encourage you, you know, because we're going to, again, sign up for that, to look at that as well. Because what we identified was, it's not just about car volumes, it's about how fast can we get there, how fast can we go? That's relevant to us. For an example, we found out that on any given day on Willa Road, the average speed during rush hour traffic, even with traffic preemption devices that can turn a light to green, and there's nowhere for anyone to go, so it doesn't matter what we do, it's about five miles an hour. That, that doesn't work for us, and we know that. We're going through Palo Alto because it's a different street scape, so we know that's a different way to move traffic. But specifically to your question, I'll let John answer what he's doing with the county, what he's doing with Menlo Park. And again, you're right, we're behind the curve here, because what is, you know, should it stay that way? Well, that's going to be a little tougher issue to deal with.
So the main thing, just like what we're doing here, it's education and it's relationships. So the main thing that really I've been doing is working on relationships with each of the different entities. I've been working now with San Mateo County, with their planning division, their Public Works, and giving information about, you know, what we have in existence, and what we need to see to, and what's going on. So that, because obviously when you act, you're going to act on whatever information is given, and when you don't know the information, you're going to make it, you know, your best decision based on that information, just like what's going on here. So with Menlo Park and East Palo Alto, we've done a really good job of being able to educate, and also it's part of the ordinance, which, you know, each of our jurisdictions has adopted, and we've been able to recognize those primary response routes, and how we would like to have some input and say into those. I'm now working on those relationships with the county and obtaining, how do we go about making those changes? One of the ways that I'm pushing with that is every time there's development in that North Fair Oaks area, I may have actually been able to meet with each of the people that has an impact, that's bringing in a new business, et cetera, and then also work with county staff, and again, educating them, letting them know, every time something goes in, this impacts us, what can we do? In the environmental impact reports, we are responding, saying, hey, this does provide an impact, this is what's, what the response is to the fire district. And what I actually informed the chief of yesterday was, I actually had a really productive meeting with the county yesterday in regards to North Fair Oaks, understanding how that North Fair Oaks community works, and what we need to do to be able to begin a process of review. They need to do a study of that area and understand the full impacts that was taking place. I believe they said all of that was done in nineteen ninety-four. And so, we're going to follow their process, and through that process, be able to, you know, let them work on their governmental aspect, to understand the impact, and what can we do to change, which we'll be able to educate with what is acceptable for us, what can still have the same achievable goals that they want to slow down or reduce traffic, but yet improve our response routes.
Any other comments?
Just maybe if we could have Mike circle back and advise the council exactly what we're looking for from them this evening, to provide feedback.
Yeah, once again, if we can go back to that one chart, if it's possible, to go back to the one, the last chart that was on Teetz, where basically, is the traffic applications? Okay. Is really getting direction from, from council of, probably the easier thing is which devices you do not want us to consider as we're putting together the policy?
So, Heather, I see the chair of our traffic, Transportation Committee here. I want to ask, has this come before you, has the Transportation Committee taken a look at this and discussed it, and, you know, is this something that the Transportation Committee would maybe as a beginning have that discussion and then bring it to council for a kind of policy format, rather than us kind of pulling things out of our head right now to do that? Or are you thinking that we're just going to give, you know, first question?
So I'm a little, I'm Larry Sweeney, I live in, live with, and I'm a little, my memory's a little foggy, because I was on the Evaluation Committee, so I heard the proposals, and I'm therefore a little fuzzy on what I heard at the part of that process and what we actually heard in the Transportation Committee meetings. But the Transportation Committee is familiar with this process, Mike has kept us very up to date on what's happening. We have not gone into the detail of analyzing individual measures. I think, you know, it's, the, the committee can discuss that, but I, I really think we need experts to come, tell us the pros and cons, and get input from the emergency service people as to which ones are acceptable under what circumstances, and to make a decision on that basis, and, or make a recommendation on that basis.
Well, so from a process standpoint, staff was initially wanting to get some direction from council so we could put together the draft policy. Once that was then, then we were definitely going to be reviewing and sharing that with the Transportation Committee. I think, you know, from a, from a staff perspective, and in looking at the Table One up on the screen, what our recommendation would be for the town of Atherton is not to include any devices that would divert traffic. So basically, those are all the devices shown in the purple. Because from experience, and, and really when you take a look at the, the variety of neighborhood traffic management programs that there are throughout the state, it's when you take a look at them, they're all very similar, okay? And they're very similar because it's based on lessons learned over the last thirty years of implementing traffic calming measures, you know, throughout California. And so based on those lessons learned, you know, things like any type of closures, any type of diverters, it's, it's going to have some, I mean, the, the traffic is going to go somewhere else.
So can I ask another question about, have we identified what streets, five or ten or twenty or eighty streets, you know, that we're looking at? I mean, I mean, things that come to my mind, Selby Lane, or Atherton Avenue, Stockbridge, you know, we have a resident who used to come in every council meeting and talk about the traffic speeding down Stockbridge. Pharaoh, I mean, Middlefield, you know, what, El Camino.
Really, we're not, we're not there yet.
We're not there.
We're working this along.
Yeah.
Trying to get from the council, like, as Mike said, we don't want the device that diverts traffic somewhere else, but examine the others.
I know, but it would depend upon which streets you're thinking about, which, you know, method you're going to use. So we can't just have a one-size-fits-all.
Well, and, and that's what the criteria, that we're going to be developing and bringing back first to the Transportation Committee, and prior to that, going out and doing a public workshop to get feedback from, from residents, before coming back to, to council. Because a lot of the streets that you mentioned, I, I don't, I would guess that they're emergency response routes.
Absolutely.
And, and, and so, a lot of that is, there's going to be trade-offs. And so, as far as us bringing forward the criteria, as part of that process is going to be, Menlo Fire is going to be, is going to be with us every step of the way. Now, they may not agree, and they may have comments about, you know, they prefer not to have certain type of devices, but as the chief said, a lot of that is about the design, the design of these various devices, and along the way, we will work with the Fire Department to see what a more acceptable design would be. But again, but the sense I have, again, based on, you know, doing this type, you know, doing these for many, many years, is that, you know, the Fire Department, public safety, emergency responders are not going to want anything that slows traffic down, but that doesn't mean that from a policy standpoint, the town could not include, you know, should not include, you know, traffic calming devices on emergency response routes if we can come up with an acceptable design, because the, the chief is right. I mean, they're large, very expensive equipment, and the difference with fire, and the reason why their emergency response routes are so important, is because they're, they know they're going to be responding from fixed points, which is their fire stations.
Good, Bill?
Yeah, so, so mine would to Mike, to follow on what you've said, but looking at this chart, I'd, I'd say the bottom two areas, I agree with your purple area, but, you know, also seeing what happened down at Menlo Park with some of these things that are listed in the navy blue, or the dark blue, where they put in things that are listed here and then ended up taking them back, those things I would think would be not something that we would want to at least have as an option. But I do think that, you know, we, the, the major roads that we have major volumes and major speeding on, there's those long straight roads, and those are the ones where it's a problem. So we can either be, excuse me, permanently putting up speed cameras that take pictures of people that are speeding, if they're legal now, or put all the police officers there to try and control it, or we're going to have to come up with something, because those are our major cut-throughs, those are the major issues, and those are the ones where the residents are actually asking us to try and do something in maybe this double hump or something like that. But, but in the answer to your question, I, I would recommend that the bottom two categories, we would, we would eliminate those, because we already have lessons learned that those actually aren't going to work, and they would cause major issues for the Fire Department in other towns very next to us, right next to us.
So, John, I just, in terms of input, one, I think it's a really important thing we're doing, it's really important we, we bring emergency responders, and we do all the whole thing, it's great that we're doing it. In terms of input, I have to feel a little bit like you had a cart before the horse here, because it'd be nice to get the experts to talk to us about what tools work, what tools don't, where they work, where they don't, before we make, you know, decisions about, about how they work. And I'm just urged to go through this process too. We think not about where we are today, but about where we're going to be in five years and ten years, because, you know, that it's going to be increasing, and the pattern that our, our set looks like. So, you know, I don't know, I would be reluctant to rule out almost anything if, if it means literally ruling it out, because if traffic doubles in ten years, it increases fifty percent in the next eight years, residents may be demanding something like that. You know, we may have to fundamentally differ approach, and I'd love to see, my question earlier to, to Keith, I'd love to see what other communities in our, you know, situation have, have done, and I want to read the mental wheel on this.
Well, and, and, and the thing there too, is, is like policies, I mean, what, what works as a policy for council now, may not work three years from now, may not work five, five years from now, and, and so the policy could be modified to better react to whatever's happening.
New additions have come out. I mean, it doesn't mean that an idea that's here, that we may not put into the plan, won't be added five years from now, what we in fact have a problem, because Facebook decided they'll canvass the town.
So, I want to emphasize, in some ways, it feels to me like we're putting a cart before the horse. I, I think where the vice mayor was going, she wanted to know what the Transportation Committee's recommendation would be on specific traffic calming devices. I know there's been a fair amount of discussion on the committee about different traffic calming devices, and I, I think that we don't want to shut off traffic like we, you can experience in North Fair Oaks in some areas because of the impact on emergency response. But things in my mind, things like the solar-powered mile, you know, the speed signs, and if it's appropriate, a stop sign, something that isn't going to stop the Fire Department. I, I mean, I'm very familiar with the, the speed humps in Menlo Park.
On orange.
On orange, yes. I, I don't know, I, I, I've wanted, and I know that the transportations looked at that with respect to Pharaohs. It seems like that, you know, those could be designed with the Fire Department in mind so that they're acceptable. I, I think that's a condition. I, I don't know where that would work. I think that what the vice mayor said about which streets we're talking about becomes very important when you're thinking about that. I think the same about roundabouts, there could be roundabouts that may be very appropriate for us, that we could de- design with the Fire Department so that they work, and they can, one thing they can do is manage the flow of traffic into town, the last thing you want is to redirect that traffic to another street, so.
Mike, I'm going to just, it isn't, I mean, I think the goal here would be, this is a foundation, and the foundation of the other may be the implementation of the first program, and then in fact, if it's not successful, then maybe an escalated need. I mean, I would find it difficult to understand if we were already escalated to, let's say, a blue level without any, you know, attempt to mitigate it at a, let's say, a targeted speed enforcement. So we'd go ahead and put a roundabout in, to get, we found that it was successful, that we could reduce the speeds of traffic by enforcement, so we don't spend the one point five million dollars to put the roundabout in, but we say to the police department, go ahead and do enforcement. I think we have, the responsibility could be an escalation versus, by the way, we're going to change the whole damn MX town and put chicanes in.
This is not a proactive program, we're not going out.
This is the policy.
Yeah, this is the policy, this is the program. We're not gonna go out and say, okay, on Far Oaks.
Yeah.
And on McCormick and on this street you can have speed bumps and on this street you can have that, we're not doing that.
Not yet.
This is just, we're not at all. It's not part of this program at all. It's it's a, a resident comes in to the Transportation Committee, says, you know, on my street, I've got a lot of cars that are going really fast, what can you do? And as uh as uh council member, we've indicated, we will go down that level of criteria. What people identify with the traffic lag is on the street, how fast they're going, which one of these applies. So it's 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 a graduated thing. We're gonna try all the ones at the bottom first and those work great, if they don't, then we can escalate it out. But if we don't want divert diverting traffic, as as Mike indicated, that that's something we need to know in advance before we authorize that as an option to go through the Transportation Committee and all the way out. We don't wanna come out to the residents, do these public outreach meetings and say, here's your world of options, when the reality, we're not gonna do the one on purpose.
No, no, uh-uh.
Okay, well, I think you've got some uh some indication for us. I'd like to move on.
I know you do, but um I just wanna say, Keith said something in his presentation about going out and doing a study and, you know, as a a objective person, you know, maybe it's really not that bad or something. I I may have misunderstood you saying that, but I think that we have been like the frog boiling to death slowly in water. Uh of the the increase, the steady increase in traffic that's just become almost like the norm right now. When we don't really want that much traffic going down Selby Lane, we don't want that much traffic going down Stockbridge. So you could go out there and say, well, this is like normal, you know, what are you talking about? And we're saying, no, we don't want those people cutting through and speeding down, we want to slow down. And then the other thing is, I think uh a low cost drug is a lot of paint on the streets, you know, kinda painting and making people, I think those uh the green bike paths and and large crosswalks, that does have an impact. And so.
So maybe the suggestion we should also make sure that is implemented is that we have a regular program that studies flow, tracking the accidents, which we do. We need to put it all together so that we're aware that if in fact that there's a problem because the volume of traffic on, let's say, Atherton Avenue was tripled in three years. And all of a sudden, we're starting to see an increase in something, but maybe we may implement something to try to.
Something more severe.
More severe, you know, so I mean, I think maybe we should implement the, the thought of tracking things at a regular basis. You know, a traffic spending program, um and then looking at all the various options, you know, if we're gonna implement it.
That traffic volume map that we distributed to you and a couple of counts back to some additional streets, so we know what the counts of vehicles are, that's our baseline.
Okay.
And if you wanna set as criteria something lower than that, as Keith mentioned, that's the policy.
And and George, I think also the chief has done a good job at also the monitoring, not that it's statistical, meaning we're not writing the tickets for speed. But yet knowing that, you know, we've written twenty thousand citations on Menlo Ave. And now this average speed on Menlo Ave is actually thirty-five miles per hour. Well, coincidentally, the enforcement's working, so it's in effect with nothing to it.
But it's not.
El Camino. But it would work on another street.
So moving on to item number nineteen.
Thank you.
Which is authorization to issue a request for a proposal to determine the feasibility and cost to construct quad gates at the Watkins Street.
Accuse myself in this conversation.
Oh, accuse again?
Yes. Thank you, counsel. Don't thank him.
Mister Mayor.
Mr. I.
Mister Mayor, can we just have administratively record reflect that council member Lampres disqualified himself because of his proximity to the railroad tracks.
Council member Lampres has refused himself and yet has a left to vote. Uh Mike.
Yeah, this this uh is before you, at the request of the rail committee and the Jew, at the Jew meeting of the rail committee. Uh they asked that, uh, you know, that that city council consider putting together an RFP to hire a consultant to evaluate the feasibility of of constructing a quad gate at Watkins. Funding for a quad gate is part of your capital improvement program, but not until, but is not for this fiscal year. So uh to to do this would require a reallocation of of dollars. Uh because currently it would, you know, there is a budget for it.
A budget amendment, right?
A budget amendment, correct.
Questions? No, uh is there any public comment? No, I'm hearing no public comment, offering that to the council.
Um you know, thank you. Uh I I know that there's been some conversation related to uh the state, maybe in in order to put HSR through the peninsula there. And I have to make sure that their quad gates are at intersection. I mean, I know the probability of that occurring is pretty low, but um I think that one of the rail committee members mentioned that uh that goal was within the next two years. I mean, are we, uh, you know, gonna go in this direction and implement the approval of something, will all the states end up in court later? Or should we wait for the state or are we premature in trying to move forward?
Yeah, yeah, I I I agree. I mean, first off, as as you know, um we also talked to Caltrans about uh consideration for for quad gates. And and I gave them some things to think about when considering that. And I know their initial response was no, but until that thing percolates along, um it may be prudent for us to wait. Plus, uh, yeah, I guess I have to question the timing. I know we've been talking about this and and we've said, yeah, we're gonna have it in, we'll put it in for a certain time. And we've been talking about the budget and the capital items since March, they've all been at public meetings, they've all been pre-announced, the date, documentation's out there. And now here's an out-of-budget request, comes in right after, right after we've approved the budget, uh and this is significant amount. So um, you know, I think that because of the other things that are currently going, um it might be prudent for us to at least consider, uh, you know, keeping this. We can always authorize this later, but but I, you know, I I'm with Kerry, I think potentially, I think that's where you were going. Is that uh perhaps it's it's uh, we should think about it for a little bit and we can authorize it later if in fact other things kind of materialize and we say, hey, we really wanna get the jump on this. And there hasn't really been accidents at that, the type of accidents this is supposed to stop. We do have quad gates over here and we did have an accident over here. So whether or not it's a safety thing is is it's being projected, is I think it's more for the quiet zone than in the main house. It's not for safety, which is how it's.
Would we know about, will we have any idea about whether it's gonna be repartied by uh the state?
For HSR?
Yeah, I mean, for sure, and that they may.
It's just, it was commentary from from Greg that he had overheard at a at a meeting that's in town, so it's not a written stone timeline.
Let me, let me ask a question, is there anyone who wishes to move this forward at this time? I think we should put this on hold. Let's move on then.
Let's bring on council member Becky.
Help us, help us return to the building.
No, no, not, I'm, 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 I'm presenting.
You can do a load of street study.
Welcome back.
Okay, George. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, very brief staff report. Uh we have a town IT technology committee that been uh, they put out an RFI for information uh last year. Uh we didn't get any responses to it. My phone call, both residents came in to the technology committees and had interested in responding, but you're interested in hearing. Uh so Mike's been working diligently, he's formed a company called Atherton Fiber. He's here this evening in a presentation on possible development of fiber network in town to serve our residents. Uh you heard the staff report that's asking for some feedback from the council, the ultimate direction would be the direct staff, city attorney to work with that, Atherton Fiber to move this project forward. That's all we're looking for, but Mike's got a nice presentation.
Great, Mike.
Is there, how do I move the slides forward?
I'll do that for you.
Okay, great, okay, perfect, thank you. Yeah, I'll I'm, I'll go really fast because it's kinda late, I think people have seated before, but the the statistics, and the important one are are the underground versus aerial. Roughly speaking, twenty percent of the city already has underground utilities and roughly eighty percent has above ground. Let's go to the next slide. So I uh, I propose that we just uh do a local, a locally owned fiber utility that owns the fiber. It's not an ISP, it it uh, we'd we'd have outside companies being the actual uh uh provide, providing internet services. So this would just build and own uh the fiber itself and then lease it either to residents or more preferably to the ISPs. Uh I hired a a firm called Buyer's Engineering to actually do a preliminary design that's that that was completed. And the numbers came out a lot higher than I originally expected, than I'd hoped for. And so if we go on to the next slide, uh the actual, and these are pretty close, they did a pretty detailed design on parts of the city, which I think is representative of the rest of the city. For aerial, you know, for for putting fiber on poles, it's about two thousand dollars per home, per 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 home that's passed. Uh for underground, it's close to five thousand dollars. It's very expensive, it also tears up the streets, uh which is is negative. And it's a very fundamental reason, I don't think it's, I don't think this is easily fixed. Uh Atherton homes uh tend to be, have between four to six times more frontage. The spacing between homes is four to six times larger than most cities. So Google Fiber, I have friends there, they they build their uh networks for about a thousand dollars per home. So Kansas City, for example, was built for about a thousand dollars per passed home. So we're somewhere between two and five times that that price to do it here. Now, I I think that's uh that's doable, but we're gonna have to get a little creative to do it. And 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 you have to kinda work backwards from what most people are willing to pay for their uh high-speed internet. And that's, the the part of it that's that's attributable to the uh, the physical infrastructure, not not the, you know, the, you know, getting the bits from the, from from the rest of the world. But just the physical infrastructure, that that's somewhere in the range of twenty-five to thirty dollars a month per home. That's that's the rough number you need to be at. And at five thousand dollars uh per home, you can't really, you know, it it just doesn't work out to do it at that price. It's not economic to build it. So if we go to the next slide, uh so so what I've proposed, and I've I've tried this out in a lot of my friends, my neighbors and friends of mine who live in town, and I've talked with people about it. Uh is that we do a combination of of things where we we sell some percentage of the fiber to homeowners. It's optional, there's no requirements, uh you don't have to do it to get service, everybody in town would get service. But that if you want to, you can buy four fibers that go from your home to the central office that you own. The the the, they belong to that home forever. And you don't have to pay a lease fee or anything, you can do whatever you want with those things. And over time, uh right now, it's, what's easy right now is to do a gigabit per second, that's a, you know, billion bits per second. It's probably, for for most people here, it's about a hundred times what they've currently got. But you can fairly easily go to, uh in the future, technologies that exist now, but are kind of expensive, and go to a terabit, which is a thousand times faster. So this is a system that will last a very long time. It's kinda like building freeway, you can't build freeways that have a thousand times the capacity, but you can build fiber that does. And so what I, what I need to do to make the system uh affordable is to get twenty percent of the people to buy these bundles for these prices, aerial for seventy-five hundred, underground for ninety-five. And that's actually not representative, if if you really charge the right prices, it would be, underground would be twenty thousand dollars and the aerial would would be less. But I I I'm trying to make it, you know, kind of work out for everybody. So these are the numbers I propose. And with that, uh the numbers work out pretty well. Uh you'd have a six point five million dollar actual cost of construction, probably with cost overruns and so on, it's probably a little higher, it's probably more like seven, but we're pretty close. You'd get roughly about four million dollars from the pre-sold fiber bundles, these would be sold before the system's built. So you you, it's kind of a one-shot deal, anybody who wants to buy them has to sign up before the system's built. And and that's, that's a real issue, we have to design the system around where these fibers go. Everybody gets one, but if you want more than one, we have to pre-design that in the system. And then that results in a net uh uh outlay of the leased fiber in the central offices of two point five million, which is, which is about the right number. That's two thousand homes uh that would have leased fiber, five hundred homes with owned fiber, two thousand homes with leased fiber, uh potentially two thousand homes with leased fiber. Of course, not everybody takes it. And that's about the right number, you're you're a little bit over a thousand dollars, but it's pretty close, so you could lease it at thirty dollars per home per month. Uh and that, and that's a reasonable inter- or return, I think, it's not a high, it's not too low. Uh let's go into the next slide. So the the key I wanna emphasize is uh that this is a system that I'm building very consciously to be open. Any ISP could come in and offer service on this, so Google, uh Comcast, AT&T, Sonic, which is uh in San Francisco in the North Bay, uh would be, would be interesting. So you'd have a, everybody would have a choice of their internet provider. Of course, Google, uh I I think uh is, it would be one of my first choices, but we're we're gonna try and get as many people as we can to come in and do this. The this is, uh it's a lot more bandwidth than people have right now, uh and it and it and it has a lot more to grow over time. So I think this is a system that in twenty-five or thirty years will still be a very viable, uh reasonable system, you know. We we won't have run out of the capacity of this system, which I think is important, because it's a lot of work to to put a system like this in, so you want it to to last a long time. I I actually, there's a, I got a uh email from several people about this, that cities who actually put in gigabit fiber, uh it's, the the availability of the gigabit is reflected in home prices. I'm not sure that makes much difference here, because the home prices are already so high anyway, I'm not sure the, an extra, you know, ten thousand dollars makes that much difference. But but it's 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 a plus, it's not, it's never a negative to have the, to have the fiber. Couple of other things that I'm gonna do, I wanna emphasize the alarm part of it. I have also some feedback from some home homeowners about, and I and I talked to one of the policemen here at on the Atherton about the way the alarms work. So we're gonna do a system uh which is compatible with existing alarm systems. Uh right, right now, a a a lot of the twisted pairs, AT&T twisted pairs that people still use are there solely because that's the only way to make your alarm work. So uh we we'll, we'll build a system that's compatible, and that has, there's some, there's some technical details in making that work, uh that that have to be, in particular, if the power goes out. You you need to make sure that the alarms can still work even when the power's out and things like that. The phone company already takes care of that over the twisted pairs, so we need to make sure that that can be done in this kind of system too. So that's, that's something we we do. Go on to the next slide then. So so there was a couple of questions that came up of why gigabit, why does it even matter? You know, we have Comcast here, it goes anywhere from ten to a hundred megabits per second. It works, uh it's not bad, it's kind of expensive, uh but it works. The biggest issue now is the the shift to Netflix and uh as more and more of the video goes into uh IP-based, internet protocol-based. Which Netflix is, Netflix is the primary uh uh company pushing out there, although there's many others at this point. The the current networks are overtaxed, Comcast typically just doesn't work very well, somewhere, you know, be- between the hours of six and ten PM, just doesn't work very well. And it's kind of a fundamental issue with their system, it, you know, it can be fixed, but it's pretty expensive and they have a, they're not using a pure fiber system. They're using, it's called a a fiber, hybrid fiber cable uh system, coax cable system. So this kind of a system, a gigabit fiber, has so much more headroom. It it, I think it just totally solves the problem of 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 congestion. For even as you go to things like uh UHD, you know, the ultra-high definition four K monitors, you know, this is, this is a a a ten AP monitor. As everybody knows, there's, you can now buy monitors that have a lot more resolution than than these do. And I think a lot of people would like to use theirs in the, in their homes, but the current uh uh network, IP-based networks, if everybody switched over to those, they they would just drop dead in the evenings. They just wouldn't work at all. Because the bandwidth that you need to do that kind of a television signal is a hun- close to a hundred megabits per per home, per TV set per, you know. So if you have one or more TV sets per home running at that kind of bandwidth, existing networks just can't do it. So I think there's a lot of demand for it. This is also a fairly high-tech savvy city, there's a lot of senior executives from from companies who understand why they want gigabit fiber. So I I feel pretty comfortable in risking uh the, you know, the the money to do this, and I I think there would be a great desire for it. I certainly want it, I mean, the reason I'm doing this is because I want it, this to my home, I think a lot of other people do too, so. So I think there's just a few more, I'll just finish up real quick, two, very quick. We'll do two central offices to try to keep the, the wires short. We've, we've worked with the city a little bit, tentatively, nothing's firm yet, but we've, we've got some tentative locations for that. And we'd probably, this is an interesting point, that we'd probably make the homeowner responsible for the connection to the street. Many cities, you, you, it's real easy to, to, to run out over aerial, you know, cable into the home. Most people have elaborate landscaping, so they don't want wires above ground. Most people already have, if you have a Comcast connection, you probably already have a conduit to your home, and we can reuse that conduit. And if you don't, it's, we can give people help doing it, but most people are kind of fussy about their landscaping, so it's not easy for another, a separate entity to come in and do this for everybody. So we're gonna, we're gonna make each homeowner responsible for doing it themselves. It's, you know, it's, for most people, it's a kind of a five hundred to a thousand dollar cost to, to do a trench, if they don't already have a trench. Next slide then. So I think this is all straightforward, the, there'll be, these central offices are small, but the, the ISPs, you know, the Googles and so on, can come in and put their equipment there and then connect to the outside world. So consumer, the, the homeowners don't really much know that, that this fiber company exists. They're, they're buying their services from a Google or an AT&amp;T or a Sonic or something like that. So, and then, and then Sonic, Sonic will, Google would lease their, the access to the lines from, from us. So it's, it's, we're more or less invisible for most homeowners. But it also does make it very easy to switch. It's, it really is, switching is as easy as calling the, the service provider and all they do is they, there's a technician who goes out and unplugs it from one box on one rack and moves the cable. The cable that physically goes to your house and just plugs it into another rack, and then you're, you're now switched from Comcast to AT&amp;T, for example, it's that easy. Which you can't do now, because the systems, AT&amp;T has their own physical system and Comcast has their own physical system. So switching is a much more complicated thing to do. Just a few more, keep it a private entity, I think, I'd like to just have it be funded by Atherton residents. I'm actually willing to put up the entire capital, but other people have expressed interest, so I'm, I'm totally open to that. We'd like to work with the city, you know, we need access to the right-of-way, I think that's the, the key thing, we need the support of the city to do this. So I think that's interesting. It, it doesn't need, the maintenance of a, of a fiber system is pretty small. It's, it's not a huge operation to keep it going. In the library, this is something that has been discussed. I, I, I can't really say much more than I like this idea, but it's kind of more up to others than me to, to decide this. But we'd be very eager to work, and I've talked to Google and others about working with, with potential with the library. The key here is if the city would like to have free internet access, the major cost for a Google to provide free internet access is support, because the people who take free internet are the ones who require the most support, they tend to be elderly, they, they have a lot of questions, really very basic questions, but they have a lot of, a lot of questions. So if, 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 it's much easier to get a Google to, to do a, something where there's a free basic internet access, you know, of course you pay more for the, for a full gigabit, but to have a, a lower speed free thing. If there's some base, if there's some way to remove some of those kind of nuisance support calls from their point of view, it's very expensive for a Google to take care of those kinds of support calls. This, this is not up to me, this is something I'd like to work with the, the library to do, but it's, it's, it's just something that's, that might be very interesting. Okay, I think, is there, I think that was the last one? Oh yeah, well, the, the final thing is the net neutrality that's being pushed, almost every day or every week now, there's, there's new things coming out of the FCC trying to push to a more open network systems. There's been a lot of history of Comcast and others putting restrictions, trying to, to make, you know, Comcast doesn't like Netflix, and so trying to discourage the use of, of things like that. And so this, this, this ties in very well with the FCC's goals, I think they'd be very, well, I know they would, because I've talked to them about it, they'd be very supportive of this. I also think that we have the potential, at least for a short time, of, of going from kind of a mediocre internet access to being actually the very best in the world for at least a short, people obviously will catch up very quickly, but, you know, I, I'm actually, if, if we do this, I'm planning to put ten gigabits per second into my home just so we can claim that we have ten gigabits in the city, so. Not that I have any computers that can go that fast, but I'll, I'll do it anyway, so.
It's a main phrase in there.
Yeah, well, everything moves ahead, I mean, it's amazing how fast, I mean, five years ago, gigabit was not common, and now every computer that chips has a gigabit on, so.
Ask a couple of questions. So just to confirm, because I wrote these questions down and then we kept going, and I think we answered some of it. Would you completely replace like cable? Computers, TVs, security systems, phone, what else?
All telecommunications can go through this.
All telecommunications?
Absolutely, absolutely.
Okay.
And, and we'll go to great efforts to make sure that there's no oddball incompatibilities that, you know, hold it up for some minor technical reason, like the alarm systems. There's a historical interface for the alarm system, so we'll go to some effort to make sure that we can work with the old alarm systems.
Clarify, maybe with the exception of the alarm hook, it's really dependent on the service provider offering?
Correct, that's right, absolutely.
Oh, okay.
So if AT&amp;T or Google came in, they, to, to get phone, cable, as well as internet, they'd have to offer the triple play set of services?
I see.
Right. Yeah, yeah, Google, Google does currently offer a triple play, Sonic is thinking about it, and AT&amp;T does currently offer one. So there are companies who have and are willing to offer a, a, a pure fiber-based triple play.
Require more electricity?
It's, it's a passive system, there's no, the system itself doesn't require any electricity, because it's light through the system. The, the, I, I, let me rephrase that to make it technically accurate. The, the boxes that the ISPs run require power, and it's a fairly small amount of power, so it requires less. But the fiber itself is light-based, so there's no power in it at all, so it's actually less power.
Here, you're probably, I'm probably gonna be the least technology challenged person. I am probably the most technology challenged. So you mentioned twenty-five hundred residents, I know that if I'm hooked up to a certain speed and it's five o'clock in the evening, my blank will go down because of the fact of volume of traffic.
Right.
Does this give the ability with twenty-five hundred residents all hooked up to the same fiber system? Does it get a log, I mean, what's a?
No, I'm going to, I'm going to great efforts to not do that. So what, what I, what I said, but it didn't, I should have emphasized more, there's individual fiber from every home to the central office. So you're not sharing your system with anybody. The only sharing happens, that happens is by your ISP, and that's his choice. So, you know, Google, for instance, will take all, all of its customers and put them into one pipe, but that's a pretty big pipe. And if it's, for their, from their point of view, it's pretty easy to add more. The problem is the sharing that's happening to you right now is your neighborhood, it's usually Comcast is the problem. They're, they're sharing a bunch of coaxial cables, and it's kind of inherent in the way their system's built. It's very hard to, to scale that to, to go faster without rebuilding the system, which they do every once in a while, but it's very expensive to do. So there's a fundamental difference in the architecture, and the main difference with what I'm building here is there's, you have, there'll be an individual fiber from your home to the central office that you don't share with anybody. And if you want to pay for it, I'll give you four fibers, right, that you can do whatever you want with, so.
And you mentioned the twenty percent is below grade, did you consider the below grade option? Because that's obviously gonna be below grade for you as well.
We're gonna, what, what we, after a lot of talk and discussion, we think the right answer is to do exactly what, whatever your current, whatever's currently in front of your house, we're gonna do the same thing. If you're underground already, we'll put underground, that costs more. And again, just to make it clear, what I'm asking people in the aerial parts of the city is to help subsidize the people who are in the underground parts of the city. Because otherwise, it's not affordable. If we did the whole system underground, it's unaffordable, and if we charge the people in the underground parts full fare for their prices, it would probably be unaffordable for them to.
But that's for the prepaid, is that right? That's for those that buy the?
Correct, that's right, that's correct.
So eighty percent's gonna subsidize the twenty?
The eighty percent is gonna subsidize the twenty percent.
What's the market of a fiber today? If, if I want a fiber in Atherton?
I don't think you, well, okay, the only ones I know of, there's several Google executives who are paying a few three to six thousand dollars a month. I think it started at six, but it's down to three thousand dollars per month for at least fiber, an individual fiber for your home. For one fiber, yeah. So, so this is cheap. If, if you know that you want your own fiber, this is cheap. It's just that most people don't know that they want their own fiber, excuse me. So, if that makes sense, so.
Okay.
I know this latest, quite a question, I have to use it about a little, this idea that you have to make a, give a one-time decision you've gotta make early. What exactly is that decision?
It's, it's whether you, we're gonna put a fiber, we're gonna put, with some spares, we'll put a fiber to every home. So that you don't have to worry about, there's no, nothing for anybody to do there, we'll do that automatically. If you want to buy, prepaid for and buy four fibers, then we'll, we'll have to engineer the extra fibers to go to your home. And, and that's the only decision. If you want to own those fibers before, you have to, you have to.
And what if a year later, my life has changed and I said, you know, this is what I really would like?
We'll try, and we'll throw a few extra fibers in, but we can't guarantee anything. The problem is, we'd have to overbuild the system so drastically to make that an option for everybody, that all of a sudden the prices went way back up again. So, so the odds are low that you'll be able to get one after the fact, so.
Could you oversubscribe with the bundle that purchases?
You can put extra?
No, 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 no.
Can she buy three?
Oh yeah, absolutely. And you can speculate, I'm happy to let you speculate.
She wants it.
Right, yes.
I just have a point, Dr. Peterson, like from some of our earlier conversations, it was everyone was going to own the fiber. The way it's proposed now, there's a few out there that would buy four, they would own them.
Right.
The remainder would lease them.
Right, sorry, if I never, if I ever said anything different, I didn't mean to, it's, it's always been, most people lease, but you have an option to buy ahead of time, right?
All right, cool, and then back to the council, the companies providing video services, we might have an opportunity under Divka, the cable. Like Comcast, they have their state franchise of video services. We could franchise, we could probably Google's and the others out there that might be providing video services to our community, we have to look into that some more.
Probably not telephone company ones.
Well, what if it's VoIP, I mean, right, do we not get franchise fees from users?
It's the provider, if they're, if they're registered as a telephone service provider, we don't get a franchise. There's a way to get UUT from them, but it's very difficult to show them.
Third point was, we've talked about having intersection cameras. There might be an opportunity for this service to get by the fiber to the town with this part, and then set up to a sort of intersection monitor cameras.
Right.
Well, my understanding is that one of the things that they're asking for is what does the town want in exchange for the access to the right-of-way? So clearly, some number of fibers.
Right. And just give us a hint ahead of time before we build this, right, it's hard to put them in after the fact. One, one other thing I thought about, I tried this out in a few friends of mine, and this, this was well-received, is the, the, the fiber bundles, a lot of people said, I'll donate a fiber bundle to the school, I'll, I'll buy one for my local school. So I, I think that's a, kind of a nice thing we might try and encourage people to do, because there's a lot of schools in Atherton.
Yeah, there's at least.
But they would get an automatic drop of one, right?
They'll be, they'll get one, an automatic drop of one, but.
They'll want more than one.
Yeah, exactly, so, exactly, so.
They're gonna want to push more than one builder, so.
Right.
Exactly, yeah. This is very exciting.
And what does, what does staff need?
We're seeking a direction, the staff in the city turns to work further with Atherton Fiber to possibly develop a development agreement of some kind. That would all come back in front of town.
So do you need a motion or just an indication of interest?
A motion would be great. Second?
And one other request I have, we, we, we talked about this.
You win, you win.
Sorry. No, no, just a request that we talked about, I just wanted to make it clear. We, we, I'd also like at some point to be able to, with the city's help, to poll residents about, you know, whether they'd like to buy a fun, bundle and things like that. So I'll need a little bit of city help to, to do that poll.
The motion was a little bit in charge, I don't think we ever met the public.
You're right, you're exactly right, public comment.
Public comment, all I want, Wally Sleet, all I wanted to say, I'm very impressed with how well Atherton Fiber, I'm afraid I don't know your name, but I, I was very, found this very interesting, thank you very much.
In my effort to move things along, I missed the public comment, is there any other public comment? Okay, great. Can we take it, so let, let's restate the motion.
Well, I make a motion to direct staff to work with Atherton Fiber to develop a development agreement to move this project forward.
All in favor?
Aye. Okay, we'll take it in the Congress.
We'll, we'll be on you. Okay, the next item on the agenda is filling vacancies for the Civic Center Advisory Committee and for the Environmental Programs.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and members of the council, you have the staff for you, you have one member, or one resident, Gary Dillbauer submitted an application by the Department of Housing and Climate for the Civic Center Advisory Committee, there is one vacancy on that committee. You're not under an obligation to fill that vacancy, because it's an up-to amount for that particular committee. And then you also have another application that was received today from Scott Peenster, who's also interested in serving on the CCAC. And then with respect to the EPC, Environmental Programs Committee, also got one vacancy, that one you are, you need to fill. And you have three carryover applicants who were asked if they would fill, and they, who might be interested in serving on the EPC.
And I see that Gary is here, why don't we do these one at a time, address the issue of the CCAC? Gary, would you like to address the council?
Sure. Maybe just a little background for me, I have a, way back in college, I was a civil engineer down in Cal Poly. And over my career, I'm here in the Valley, most of the time I was spending in internet companies, and having that.
Wally, can you step out?
I'm sorry.
I haven't been doing much civil engineering until my, my last years at eBay, I was actually working with our CEO on trying to build an environmental strategy for the company. And we built a few data centers, we built some buildings for our, some of our campuses, and it actually became my most enjoyable job. And I really enjoyed seeing lead-certified buildings and creating places where people enjoyed working. So that is kind of my background. After moving from eBay, I actually went to a venture firm where we work on investing in green technologies. But always was frustrated that a lot of landlords wouldn't put these technologies in their buildings. So we've been buying and renovating buildings in Sunnyvale in the last few years, and making these buildings net zero, which means they produce more energy than they consume, and trying to create better places for people to work. And so I, I've talked to Rick here a little bit, but we're really excited to make buildings more energy efficient. But I want to create buildings where people love to come and work, create better talent, and create more loyalty. So that was a real interest in the committee, and I have enough knowledge here to be somewhat dangerous, and I had really kind of kept a, an eye on trying to make sure these things are cost-effective. You know, I know the city has a certain budget that you guys want to stay within, and just have some experience doing that. So it can be helpful to the council, would love to help out, but I know you have a very good committee right now, that seems to be working very well. But if I can help in any way, I'd throw my hat in there.
Any questions for Gary? Have you been to any other meetings?
I went to the meeting last week, or we can have to go.
Before that?
Nope.
So I, I personally, I've, I've known Gary for a long time, kind of watched his career, know his wife. Very personable guy, easy to work in a collaborative manner, and as evident of your rise in your career with eBay and with the Steve Wester group now. And I understand you also have a good working relationship with the architects, the WRNS group that is with our group also. So I, I would hope our relationship.
What, what is your relationship with the WRNS?
We're, we're doing another forty thousand square foot building right now, and I'm using WRNS as our architect. And this is the third architect we've used in this whole process, and they're by far the best architect that we've had on one of these projects to date.
So I guess my question would be for George, has the CCAC, they had an opportunity to bet in that they wanted a replacement?
Uh, no, that's actually not their role, it's the role of the council, they haven't asked that question.
Because I, I, I just know that this just got posted, I know it's, it's the same problem we always have, as we post a trend in the holidays or people on vacation. I don't know how many people had an opportunity, man, sorry, we only have two applicants. I actually think it was a short notice, I just remember a funeral, so I just don't know if any people have that. So I'm assuming they don't, I don't remember.
It was published.
It was published.
I know, but it was literally, I mean, we're literally in summer season. For us, it's like, you know, people don't know about it, they don't buy it, especially when we're not in town. So I just didn't know if CCAC had, you know, any idea.
But at least a member of the CCAC commented to the council on it, I mean, you want, probably send an email to a member of CCAC, but that's, that's all. But that's, that's all, they're, they're on a roll in recommending appointments or anything to Gary.
But they know it was posted, it was part of the CCAC meeting that it was being posted. So it's definitely not the CCAC.
Right.
Any feedback, so, when it was talked about, was there any feedback?
There wasn't discussion, I don't recall there's specific discussion in the issue.
Not the CCAC committee.
They, they did ask to pick the agenda, it's an EAB, but it's not the role of the committee to discuss and report my recommendations to the council on that.
So, well, I'll say, I think one of the most important things for this Civic Center project is to, this project is going to happen as a result of private donations from our citizens, and we have to be able to excite the imagination of our residents in order to support this project. This, that, otherwise it's not gonna happen. And there, you know, I think that there are two, there are several components, but there's two main components in my mind that are going, that are central to making this a successful project. First is the opportunity to really define what community means in Atherton by creating the center to Atherton, and making this parcel that right now feels like a parking lot into something that Atherton residents can really feel proud of. And, and I think that the proposals that the CCAC has been working on are moving to make that happen, and they're very exciting. The, so one is creating the heart of Atherton, defining community for our town in a way that we really haven't had an opportunity to do for many, many years. And the other is, we're building a civic center that, you know, and, and the proposal is to build it mostly on what is currently the parking lot out there, gives us access to sunlight, enables us to build the first zero net energy civic center in California. That, I think, is a wonderful potential teaching moment for other municipalities, and at least as important to me is for our residents. I want our residents, when they come into this center, to come into a place where they can see solutions that they could imagine couldn't make with their own house. We generate an enormous amount of electricity in the homes in this town, and our Civic Center needs to be a teaching tool for that. I, I think Gary's experience with zero net energy buildings, the first really commercial zero net energy building in Sunnyvale, and working with WRNS, our architects, on another one, that's exciting to me. I think that, that, that could be a real contribution to us, I feel excited about that.
Yeah, and the other thing I would tell you guys is that I was on the design committee for the, the Packard Hospital, and, you know, as we looked at all the architects for that project, what really struck me was one architect that started out with the perspective of a child in a bed. It wasn't about the building, it was about the child and their experience, the doctor's experience, the parent's experience. And oftentimes, we build buildings, and we think about how this is gonna look, how it's gonna perform from an energy perspective, but you're gonna have employees there, and, you know, those are the people that are gonna live there ten, twelve hours a day, and you wanna make sure you create environments that are extraordinarily special to them. Google does that, Apple does that, you guys have the chance to do that. Over time, I think it helps to attract better employees, and as I said, helps to retain employees. So, to me, the people are the most important things in these buildings, and then hopefully make these buildings smart, and you devise them so they produce more energy than they consume. That's not that hard to do anymore, you just be smart about it, but I think if you guys have that vision, you can do something truly special.
So, I'll, I'll say that I'm disappointed in the staff report, I'm, nothing gets you, Gary. I'm disappointed that we don't have more applicants, I'm disappointed in the staff report because if there's an implication here that it's, Gary would be great because of his audit and finance committee application, and frankly, he's gone out of the month, so, I mean, I think that's a little deceptive. I think your background is fabulous, I wish we had more people that were actually applying with more diverse backgrounds as well as your background. I mean, I just kind of feel like I've got one applicant. And I got an applicant that I'm reading a staff report, sorry, two applicants, as of this morning. But I got a staff report that says it's because of audit and finance, that's what Robert's for. So, staff report is misleading, and I don't like it. What is our procedure?
Uh, you guess you had more than one candidate, you had to vote.
Okay. Do we have ballots?
Yes.
Okay, work.
And there's no issue with considering Scott's application practically filed?
No, there's actually no deadline, just proceed that with you.
Is there any issue with WRNS in conflict with work lines or any?
We can't, we can't see it. Uh, you know, I, I don't know if he's, he wouldn't have a financial remuneration from this, right, Rachel? So, it's hard to see.
He's a, he's a volunteer.
Yeah.
So you do know, we're, we're all volunteers.
You got four votes for Gary Dilbo.
Great.
Great.
Congratulations.
Well, thank you, guys. I look forward to helping out.
Alright.
Yep, Environmental Program.
Next meeting's July twentieth.
Okay. Great, thanks.
Environmental Program Committee, we have one vacancy, we have three applicants. Do we have ballots?
I checked with all three applicants, the same, there's still Chris and I heard back from Polly Joseph and Denise Coverman that they were. Matt McRight, maybe not your first, but we is listening on that.
So, before we vote on this, is there, does anyone on the council wish to make a comment?
Well, I, we got a letter from George today, it said that we can appoint more than one.
Correct, the EPC is as large as you want.
We have to appoint one, if I understand. And, and I also understand that there were, because of the resignation, there were only four at this last meeting, and they didn't have four.
They did not, uh, please, they had four, I'm the specialist here.
Oh, yeah. I got the speeding ticket, so.
Gary in Atherton?
On no convenience.
It's in the on card.
You have one, I'm going to vote one, you have one.
Should we have a separate discussion or would we just?
Uh, I would vote one, and then actually one more, and then one on the council, so.
Do you want to choose one, or do you want to? Okay.
I think she should have listened PG and E for the likes of Dux trenching.
We got three votes for Holly Joseph, and one each for Denise, I got.
Okay, so then the discussion is, do you want to vote for a decision?
Yeah, we wanted to keep it small in order to have quorum.
All of your pointies?
Okay, let's move on. The next item on the agenda is the response to the grand jury report on sea level rise. George.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, you have the, actually, you received it electronically, the flooding ahead, finding the sea level rise grand jury report. Uh, this was reviewed internally by staff, and then we produced the, the letter and a response to the findings and the recommendations. And as I mentioned before, grand juries can often be very broad in their discussions and analysis of issues, and some of those issues are political, some of those issues are speculative, they can be all over the map. So, my method of response to those in terms of the findings and recommendations is to keep those as short and succinct as possible, and not debate the issues within the report itself. But the council certainly agreed with wordsmith, that report anyway, feel appropriate. It is, at the end of the day, your letter back to the grand jury.
Questions, recommendations? Other comment?
I'll make, Wally Sleet, I may make a very brief comment, I don't know whether George has done this already. I went to a conference down at, uh, Mountain View, and they're doing big things in Mountain View. And you ought to talk to the Mountain View city planner down there, to kind of get an idea of what they're doing.
About their sea level rise?
Yes, yes, all, all along, you know, from Palo Alto South. Okay, that's it, thank you.
Right, your grand jury, China, any other public comment?
So, I have a public comment, I, I have a, I have a, right, I have a comment. Because from the CK group board, I'm on an ad hoc committee, and we had a, we had two conference calls about this, and we went through this excruciatingly detailed comments. And one of the big things that came up was something that Wally just brought up, is that we need to, as not only a county, but as a bay, you know, environment, all baywide counties need to coordinate sea level rise projects or implementations, planning. Because if one section does something one way, it's gonna impact another section maybe adversely, or competitively, or whatever. So, those issues have to be taken into consideration. And the fact that flood, flooding is, I guess, item number five. Flood risk is not only based on geography, but, and not political boundaries, but it's also the actions that impact the flooding. And it's, so, the risks are also impacted because of actions that are taken from one jurisdiction to the other in how they mitigate their flooding. So, that needed to be stated. So, where we say that we are generally agreeing with findings F2, F4, F5, F2, we should say we generally agree, but we would like to include the coastline. It's, it's a threat count wide, including the upline areas and the coast, and the airports. So, I don't know if we want to get into that detail. I think the way our letter is, we're responding to their recommendations directly, which I thought was adequate and thorough enough. But some of their findings that we just, like F8, finding F8, that there's a recognized need for a countywide approach, but it's not only countywide approach to sea level rise, planning, coordination, but also between all of our baywide counties and jurisdictions. I think that that's something that we need to push back on this grand jury, and maybe we need to get the other grand, like the Santa Clara County grand jury involved, or the Alameda grand jury involved, you know, it's, it's a baywide problem. It's not just Santa Clara County.
Okay, cool. Yeah, um, in reading the whole report, I found it kind of interesting that, uh, two points. One was, in some of the preamble's before the findings, they said we had to face with all the city managers and other key individuals, and they said they didn't think that the county should be setting up an organization. And then they have recommendation three and recommendation four. A, set up a separate countywide organization, a JPA, and then go on to say, oh, by the way, before you even set it up, you should expand it. So, you know, I, I found that kind of interesting, and, and what I didn't see in here was that the building continues along the seafront. First off, we don't have any water to put in the developments that's in there. And, and now on top of that, we're gonna continue to build along the seafront so that we have a bigger and bigger problem and more expense to do it. And there's been no moratorium on it, there's been, there was no discussion really, other than to say, hey, look at your general plan, to say, you know, take a step back, and, and if you're gonna develop there, you need to start building and participate and contribute into, you know, developers need to contribute into the, into the levy, levy defense, et cetera. And so, I thought that those two things were, you know, one was kind of an interesting, funny thing, that we would say those things, but, 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 uh, other thing is that, you know, that they didn't really address the key issue, that we're continuing to build, and there's some of it just going on just more than us. They continue to build, they continue to make plans and build because they want the development costs and the development money. And then they say, well, we have a problem, so, you know, I, I didn't think that the report went far enough really to say it's a serious problem, and as they say, it is, and, and it is. I mean, I've read other reports that have even more dramatic effects than what they've identified. You're gonna think that we need to take maybe a little stronger, let's have a moratorium, then let's go ahead and let's figure out, on a bay area wide range, as Vice Mayor pointed out, how we're going to combat this sort of problems.
I think Janet Batum's response was, seemed appropriate. An issue that strikes me in it, I, you know, one man's opinion, is, I worry about the fact this kind of stuff happens on democracy generally, in the sense that we just keep moving towards super regional agencies that are not elected, that are further removed from the, the individual voter, and they're making now big decisions. And this is an example of, of an entity that could make very big decisions, it's removed from the voter. And, and somewhere here, I'd like to see that they're at least aware of that, and that they, to the extent possible, push things back so that there isn't political input, because people have to buy into this, and people have to be part of the decision.
Well, so that's why CK, as a board, wants to be the main entity here, rather, you know, and, if not the main entity, to work really closely with Supervisor Dave Pine, and, you know, that, and the county, which is, you know.
Doesn't somehow, you're like, it looks too black for you.
But they're, they're saying because CK has a representative from every city in San Antonio County, as a table, they will, uh, be able to have the voice of the residents, you know, and the political power in there.
Well, okay, I'll comment, I'll comment. Uh, I've been to, uh, countywide sea level rise conferences that they've planned, initiated with Jackie Sprenger's board.
I went to one.
Right, and, and it's very substantial what San Mateo County is subject to. Twenty-five percent of the cost of sea level rise in California is borne by San Mateo County. So, that's a big deal, most of that's on the bayside, not on the coast side, and it's no doubt why, because of the fiddle. And what is on the bay, right, we've got Foster City, we've got the airport, we've got Redwood Shores, and we've got the whole Facebook area. It, it's very substantial, I, I think that there does need to be regional-wide planning, but I think that San Mateo County has some pretty special issues that it needs to focus on. And I think that's why they've initiated this, because they feel like they need to focus on it, and if they wait for a bay area wide nine-county response, it's gonna take a long time. I do feel concerned about the democracy issue. I, I think about BACMID or ABAG, these are organizations that are full of elected officials, and CK's, CK is another one, but when you don't get elected to represent people with respect to that position, you're elected to. We all represent our residents who are elected as councilmen, who then get appointed to CK, our work on CK is once removed from the voter, and I think that's not a democracy issue. I, I don't know the answer to this, I, I think it's, I, I see some things, you know, where you have elected officials appointed to some of these super regional committees where they're not very responsive to anybody. They sort of do what they decide to do, and they're in this zone that makes me concerned. And I don't know the answer, I just feel concerned about it. The, the one comment I have with the response is in response five, in the last sentence, we say, as a result, while the town supports the funding of a regional agency to address the issues, the town cannot identify a timeframe for further action. I think, consistent with the staff report, the introduction to that, I would add, the town believes that the initial funding should come from the county, and cannot identify a timeframe. And the idea here is that the county will fund the initial work on this, and then there has to be a decision about whether there's a JPA or a-
or a, an elected agency. Uh, I'm not sure what we'll do with that. I actually think if we, in the next, whatever, ten years, begin to really experience sea level rise, there's gonna, uh, this is an enormous cost and, and it requires accountability.
And it's enormous organizational.
And it'll trickle down to its jurisdictions. And we've got so many moving parts with so many other jurisdictions that wanna do massive building, which has a huge impact. But yet you're gonna have another entity, another bureaucracy in the middle, like the California Regional Control Board, another entity in San Antonio County. But if you don't have all the counties together that surround the bay, we're the toothpick and the knife. And so it's, I mean, I agree with the direction we have here, but it's a lot bigger picture. And there has to be a lot more control than just the local entities. It's more, you know, bay area entities. Because we're dealing with the same problem, with the toothpick.
May, maybe in our response, we should capture both, both that sentiment that we need to look at this as a bay area and not only San Antonio County. And I think what Bill said is quite relevant, that, you know, if we're allowing development in the zone that their scientific analysis says is subject to sea level rise, then at a minim, at a minimum, there should be development fees being set aside. That-
So, so across the bay, uh, you go Dunbarton and then towards Fremont on the backstreet, like that Arkenwood. Uh, uh, there is this whole, uh, housing development that they are attempting to build right on the bay. And what they've done is they've built up these giant, like hills, berms. I mean, that they're going to build these houses on these artificial hills that they've created. It's just amazing what they're doing. And it's like right there along the bay. So this is actually newer, I think it is. But, I mean, you go, well, what are they really thinking? Is this, is this happening? And so that will impact, I mean, we're all in this bathtub, uh, together. So it's, uh, it's a very big, yeah.
So does, does that, does that direction work or do you need a motion?
Uh, that direction works. Let me feed it back to you to make sure I've got it. So what I heard so far was that within the F two, uh, generally agreed, but would like to include the coastline and upland areas and airports into the analysis to address broader issues related to continuing development, other services such as water service delivery.
Yeah.
Uh, within F eight, address it something as not only countywide, but also bayside and other jurisdictions.
Okay.
Within R five, the town believes the initial funding should come from the county and cannot identify a timeframe. Uh, and then also incorporate somewhere within one of the findings summaries, uh, a statement or two about recommendation, about electorate representation on whatever board is ultimately resolved.
Wow.
Great.
That's a big note taking.
I think, I think that is, we're up to item twenty-three, which are council reports.
Oh, I have one.
I know what you're doing. I'm, I bet everyone else does too.
Here, I know. There. Oh, did it? Oh, good. Did you get it?
I didn't.
I was in the class.
So here's what I think's gonna have to have next. For those that don't put their council reports in, in time or before the meeting, the mayor should quiz you on, on, no, on, on what you've done. So you can verbally give a report.
Okay, we'll take that under advisement. Was that a motion?
Could you?
Yeah.